Six o'clock. All right, so go ahead and call this workshop to orders Caldwell Planning Zoning Commission Workshop, February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. And we just have one agenda item on this workshop, no action will be taken, but it's amendment package two that's found on the Caldwell website, the department's website. And so I'll turn it over to staff, there are quite a few different elements to this. And so I think we'll probably go through one piece at a time, I'm presuming.
Yes, true.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me call the roll, please.
Zamora.
Here.
Harmon. Butros.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Whitwick.
Thank you, sorry for that, and we do have a quorum.
Are we recording, do we need to leave the mics on?
I think what they're streaming, right, it's still a public meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we good?
Yes.
Okay, uh, good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Robin Collins, Community Development Director, City of Caldwell, and Joe Dodson is here, our Senior Planner. And we're here to present the next package of amendments that we kind of warned you was coming your way. Um, we have some slides here, we're gonna go through each one, on the slide, we're not going through every single thing that was on the cheat sheet that we provided for you, but trying to touch kind of those highlights. But as we do each article, we'll ask you if you have any questions on that article, and we can go through that article individually. You'll see during the presentation, some of the larger items, like the landscaping, the parking, the multifamily, we're gonna save those till the end, because Joe's gonna go into a lot more detail in those, because that's where the the complexity is, is within the landscaping code, the multifamily, the density bonus program, he'll go through that at the end. But again, if you have any questions, as we go through the articles, once we're done presenting that article, we'll ask you, and feel free to to ask questions. Okay, so we'll get started here.
So, so if I could.
Sure.
Did the city council already vote on the comprehensive plan?
Yes, the comprehensive plan has been adopted.
And was it unanimous?
It was not, it was four to two. The two votes that were left over, one person was more concerned about wanting to see the codes, but the codes always come after the comp plan. The other person, I think, was just concerned about the planning boundary area, and I think there was just some confusion, they thought we were expanding our planning boundary, when we're actually pulling it back five thousand acres. The density bonus, they had, they, we went through that with them, and the criteria, they're excited to see the density bonus program, we did go through what we're proposing as far as the ideas for some of that, and we're gonna workshop it with them as well. We did agree with council that we would not propose a density bonus for the R-one zone. So it is capped at the eight dwelling units per acre, it will not go to the twelve, and that is part of the footnotes in our code that we'll go over right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, as we kind of started last year, or maybe it was the end of the year before, five amendment packages, this will be the largest of the amendment packages, so the other ones that you'll see in the future are going to be very minor, we might come back, not might, we will come back with probably an infill development chapter, to try to address some smaller infill properties and some flexibility in some of the landscaping or setbacks or something, to be able to get these particular parcels to be able to develop and not sit there. So we'll probably come back with something like that. There's a few other minor tweaks that we'll come back with, but again, this is the largest amendment package, and we'll go through why that's large, but it's really all because we're reorganizing the whole code, and so there are parts that have to move at the exact same time, or it won't work. Again, we're primarily focused on chapter ten, you will see today, there was a little bit in chapter eleven that we've worked with engineering on to amend a couple little tweaks. We do plan on doing probably an overhaul of the subdivision code, but that probably won't start for probably another year, year and a half. So anyways, workshops will be held with council to communicate and discuss these as well, and this is amendment package two. So just to, just to go through again, the purpose of the amendments, we're reorganizing and reformatting, reformatting it mainly for ease, right now, things are scattered in the code, like if you want to find out something about an R-one zone, you have to go to Article one, there's something in Article two, there's stuff in Article three, it's all over the place, this is really to take all those code sections and put everything that has to do with residential zoning districts in one article, same with commercial, same with industrial. Minor and editorial revisions, over the years, there's been a lot of amendments to the codes, which has created a lot of inconsistencies, internal conflicts, where one section tells you something, another section contradicts the other section. There's internal policies that have happened, but they weren't captured in the code, as you all know, the last comp plan we had was adopted, they never went back and amended the codes to match that comp plan, that's also why we've been working diligently to try to get these codes done, so that once the comp plan comes, there's not a huge delay on the codes, because it causes a lot of problems, not only for the commission and council, but for staff to be able to review them and make sure they're in conformance with the comp plan and the code, if they don't match, and then also just for the developers as well. Again, to reflect current policies, create, we have a lot of areas in our code where the code is actually silent, because it hasn't been updated to address newer land uses or change in policy, so we're clearing up the portions in the code that have been silent, that really have caused us problems when developments have submitted, and we don't have any guidance on how to handle those situations. The biggest one is to amend the regulations, to implement the vision of the new comp plan, update outdated code sections that are no longer applicable, and really just to make it more efficient. So this little chart here really just kind of tells you why this amendment package is so big, so if you start on the top left, chapter ten, Article twelve, that is the downtown section, we need to move that out of chapter twelve into Article eight, to free up Article twelve. And then if you go to the next line down, all of those articles, two through six, we need to, we need to move all of the stuff that's in those into Article twelve, so that we now have those freed up, so that we can start creating that residential districts, commercial districts, industrial districts. The bottom line, Article seven and Article eight, that is the landscaping and tree ordinance, thank you. And those are being moved, the main reason for those being moved is not only to free up those articles, but they're its own article, and we already have an Article two, which is regulations applicable to all zoning districts, and landscaping and the tree ordinance is applicable to all zoning districts, so again, cleaning up the code, trying to move things that, if it is applicable to all zoning districts, it needs to be in that chapter. And then all of those, like two, three, two through six, those are specific use provisions, like RV parks, manufactured home developments, well, those really should be in its own chapter for specific use, specific use meaning they have to meet all the requirements of the base code, but they also have to meet those special use provisions. And so all of this has to happen at the same time, which is what's in this packet right here. So again, this will free up Article five through nine, you'll have residential zoning districts, commercial zoning districts, manufacturing and industrial. Urban core is gonna be a new term to you, used to be like mixed-use districts, we're calling it urban core because it really is, it's the downtown and the traditional neighborhood, and they're all kind of that urban core. And then special purpose districts is a term that was used in the comp plan, that's your airport district, your college district, your hospital district, and your public district, so those are really special, they have unique circumstances about them, so those are gonna be in their own article. So again, we're gonna go through all of the minor amendments first, let you have time for questions, and then where we've highlighted in yellow, we're gonna save the detailed ones for the end, so that we have more time to go into deeper, to more, more specific detail with you. So with Article one, this is just kind of our main chapter, this is where you establish the zoning ordinance, we're really just making some editorial amendments to improve clarity, we're correcting some code section errors. In ten oh one, three, and four, again, editorial amendments, we've added some new tables in there for the base districts and the overlay districts, we did this because we're moving all of the purpose statements and everything out of that into those individual articles for each district, but we want to provide references to those, so we created a table with the districts and referencing them back to their new articles. And stop me at any time, actually, if you have questions on what I'm talking about. Section ten oh one oh eight, we've added text to clarify how split zoning works, we had already had some stuff in there for split zoning, but what we didn't realize is it's very different when it's a subdivision, so what we basically said is you're not allowed to have split zoning. But, but when you subdivide, now you have multiple parcels, so you might actually have split zoning for a while until you subdivide. And so we didn't think about that when we did the first amendment, so this is cleaning up one of those unspoken codes that we didn't think about that issue until we had the problem.
So I actually did have a question about split zoning, because I didn't understand it, and and my question was, please explain the practical implementation of this provision.
Yeah, so the reason we put this in the code is we were getting a lot of, not only existing parcels, but new ones that were coming in, that they wanted to zone a portion of it C-two and a portion of it R-one, and it becomes very confusing to where you draw that line, especially if it's not a subdivision, and so we actually went back and said, you know, if you're bringing in a new parcel, if you're rezoning, you cannot ask for a split zone unless you're doing it where you are subdividing and you're creating two separate parcels, so we don't want a single parcel with two different zones, because then it becomes very confusing on, well, what land uses are regulated where. This just makes it cleaner.
Right, thank you.
Um, the next section, ten oh one oh nine.
Actually, before you go?
Yeah.
Now, I'm just processing through that question, so in creating this specific ordinance on split zoning, is it, is there best practice out there around this, or did you glean from other jurisdictions?
Yeah, there are best practices, a lot of jurisdictions will say exactly that, that you can't have split zoning, some will say, if an existing parcel has a split zoning, whatever the majority of the zone is for that parcel, or the more restrictive zone regulates.
That's what this says, the more restrictive.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. The next one, just some simple language, and really, this is to just update the new language in the comprehensive plan about place types, because they call them place types instead of land use designations, so it's really just to update the language, the text, and that means the same. Section ten oh one ten, this is the definitions, the reason you're seeing all of them in there again is because we reformatted them, because the codifiers put them online, and they, we, because originally, when we gave them to them, we had like main titles, and then we had subtitles, like signs was the main title, and then the different types of signs, well, when they reformatted them, they got all messed up online, the formatting, so we decided, okay, we're just gonna take that out, and we're just gonna say sign, freestanding, sign, monument, sign, so that they all come in order, there are some new definitions in there. We have changed some definitions, and we'll go through those a little bit when we get to the land use tables, and mainly because in our code, we probably had fifteen definitions for different retail stores, and a lot of them were really the same type of intensity, you know, and it didn't make sense, because we had like a general retail, retail store category, but then we had a convenience store, but the definite, the definition was exactly the same, the only difference was the convenience store could only be five thousand square feet. And so that's why we went and created definitions based on, and we kind of followed the NIC code, which is, you know, the national industry standard for how they, when you go to, when you have a business, they'll give you an industry classification, so we kind of tried to follow those where you have boutique retail, which is a square footage, and then you have limited retail, which is a little bit bigger, square footage, then you have general, which is bigger, then you have a little bit bigger, and then you have big box, which is your huge ones. We did leave some retail out that we knew that has been a concern for council, or maybe even the commission, those things would be like the tobacco vape stores, the secondhand thrift stores were a concern, at least in the past, they have been, so we left those as a separate retail use, but the other retail uses that were simply like uh, no, the ice cream shop is coming under restaurant. But that's a good, that's a good example, too, because when we got to restaurants, we did the same thing, and we, because we had definitions for like espresso shop, delicatessen, ice cream shop, and they were all separate, when in reality, the intensity of those are the same, what's really important with those is more, is it a sit-down restaurant, is it a drive-through, you know, do they have, do they have alcohol, you know, that kind of thing. And so that's why you're seeing a lot of definitions, we also pulled, again, definitions from all over the code and centrally located them in one location, so they're not in various articles. Any questions on Article one? I didn't go through everything, Article one's pretty simple, but it was a lot of moving stuff and just.
Yeah, I, I have several, if you guys have any Article one questions, you want to go first?
I, I do just have a follow-up, so like the vape ones, you left those out, or as you give that as a, as a for instance, so those ones are called out, so that they, so there's an opportunity to address them through a special use permit or some other permitting opportunity?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Commissioner Larson?
Not any at this time, I mean, the only thing I was thinking about, but I don't think it's, I don't know if it's appropriate for here, is specifying zones that both the city and the county are like vestedly interested in, a zone that's used by one or by the other, but it's not zoned for a specific thing, so, and I don't, yeah, I don't know how to specify that, but that's the only zone that I was thinking about, which I don't know that there's any such thing that would exist, to specify something that is owned by the city, used by the county, owned by the county, used by the city. And then, yeah, I don't, I don't know how you would zone that, because you can't specify, because it would possibly change.
Are you talking about publicly owned, so that's where the public district comes in, so. Which is relatively new in the last year, the goal would be that, like, we've talked with the county, for instance, and their goal in the future is to, because their campus is right now in the traditional neighborhood, their goal in the future is to rezone that to public district, and so any, and we would do that, that's our goal with city property, too, so any of our city parks or city facilities, they will be rezoned to a PD district in the future, is that, was that what you were asking?
Yeah, that works, thank you.
Okay. In ten oh one oh two, I noted that paragraphs F and H contained vague, unenforceable language, and this, this goes back to my technical background, where shall statements are different than should statements, and I noted that you included tho- those definitions, I think, in in the first cheat sheet, where where you differentiated appropriately.
Which one are, again, so I can?
It's ten oh one oh two, paragraphs F and H, I, I can read them, it, an example of this kind of language is aid in the harmonious orderly and progressive development of the city, while ensuring satisfactory interrelationships of residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, recreation on open space areas of the city, none of that's wrong, it's just, how do you verify that?
What was the definition for, I'm sorry? Was there, are you talking about a definition, or was that just?
No, no, it, it was, it, under, under ten dash oh one dash oh two.
Okay.
This is paragraph F.
Okay.
So, I, I don't argue with, with the intent of it.
Sure.
But i- is it, it's a statement that if it's in code, it seems like it should be verifiable, something.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that, because that's good to know, because maybe there's another section in there that's enforcing that, I don't know, we'll have to look, I didn't get that one printed off, because our printer died.
And, and I, I ended up surrendering on this type of topic, because it's, it's throughout the code, and in some places, it's clearly intended as guidance.
Right.
But in other places, it looks like it's the language of, of, of the law.
Okay.
And it's like, okay, well, if somebody tried to challenge you on that, how hard is it to defend the language, you know, if somebody says, well, I think my development is harmonious, and, and a planner may have said, well, well, no, or, or a commission may have said, no, we don't like this, we don't think it's harmonious.
Okay, so maybe we need to look at. Okay, so maybe we need to look at what that means, and define what that means.
Yes, and, and in a previous life, we used to have to sit down and take statements of intent and create verifiable requirements, and that's a hard thing to do.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think moreover, and Christian Butros, you correct me if I'm wrong, in seeing those throughout, maybe that's just could be a global feedback to, to staff, to just kind of address that through the other ones, and, and maybe, and then address that however you need, when you take it to council.
Except looking at the breadth of this, I, I think it's almost impossible to expect complete compliance, but, but maybe to, he immediately agrees.
True, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll press on, in ten oh one oh two dash three, paragraph E deleted subparagaphs one and two, and I think the, the cheat sheet said that these are processes that were never done, i- is that correct, that that's what was deleted?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, press on. Ten oh one oh nine, attempts to resolve zoning designation issues, and I, I thought the language needed to be strengthened, that is, a suggested rephrasing of part of the sentence would be, the director may waive the requirement to subdivide the parcel, but will determine which single depicted place type is most appropriate, so that it's, it's unambiguous that when there's confusion, the director has the authority and will make that determination.
Would you be willing to send me that language?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because we, we love recommendations, so if you have feedback or anything for how we can make, make strength in the text, that would be fantastic.
Okay, in, in that same, in section ten oh one ten, the definitions, definition seven is the administrative decision, and that includes the director or any designee, since the scope of the, and please stop me if I say something wrong, it looked to me like the scope of that role for administrative decisions was expanded from the past, is, is that correct? The director has now more authority to make administrative decisions.
I wouldn't necessarily say authority, but what I think, Mr. Butros, you're referring to is how it, that is now enlisted in some of the land use tables, more directly and specifically than when we, we didn't have that before, but it, it's always been the director or their designee, which means that when I review this, I just, I'm the reviewer, because obviously Director Collins has a million other things to do, and then I take it to her and say, hey, this is what I'm thinking, this is what I'm assuming that you're okay with, let's look at this, and then she would sign off.
If it hasn't changed, my, my concern was, if, if that role is de- is delegated, that it's possible to lose accountability, if, if there really hasn't been a change, then there is no change in accountability, is that correct?
I see what you're saying, it hasn't changed, but I see what your concern is, so maybe it could be better worded like administrative review by the director or under the guidance of the director. Did you catch that, Joe?
Was that your concern, just making sure that the director stayed involved through that and not just solely to a designated.
Right, there's, there's a trail of responsibility that has to connect to the director.
Sure, sure, no, great feedback, appreciate that.
Okay. Definition one hundred and ninety-four was extraordinary impact, and could you talk about what it means to define an application or a development as an extraordinary impact?
That definition actually comes out of the impact fees, I believe, for extraordinary impact, that's an impact fee definition. So we brought all definitions into the main definition, so some of those are specific to certain chapters in the code, so extraordinary impact comes out of the impact. Certain chapters in the code, so extraordinary impact comes out of the impact fee. And I believe there's a section in the impact fee that says. You can consider certain c- conditions. Um, if there's an extraordinary impact. Um, and I don't recall what those are, I don't know if you recall what those are in the impact fees.
So, let me read that.
So that might possibly mean that under certain conditions, impact fees could be increased as, or?
I think it had something to do with how you calculate the fees. But is there, does it say impact fee before that? So maybe what would help is if we did like we did the other ones where we put impact fee. Dash extraordinary k- impact, so that we know that that definition is specific to impact fees. That might be helpful.
Yeah, uh, and maybe with an explanation of why that's significant, how that can be applied.
Okay, I think it's in the impact fee ordinance, why it's significant, how it can be applied, we'd have to pull up.
Yeah, and Joe, what you had pulled up, was that from the code or was that from the?
This is the definition.
The definition, yeah, and so I, I think that we could just add, it, it talks about the, it contemplates the impact for. Fire, parks, traffic, so all of our impact fees, so maybe we can just have something there that. It's at the discretion of the director or the city engineer to determine the extraordinary impact, but it does contemplate. The cost of improvements as a reasoning for determining that extraordinary impact.
So I'll write, we'll write that down to, to look at the impact fee ordinance.
Yeah, it seems like that could be something that is really significant under certain circumstances.
And since you thought it maybe was a term that, that went to development, maybe we should put the word impact. Fees, development impact fees in front of it. Okay.
Yeah, okay, um, definition two thirty four will, uh, pertain to the hearing examiner. And, and this, the, the issue here might be me not understanding what the current roles were between. Staff, the hearing examiner, the planning and zoning commission. I think the city council is easy to understand, there, there, the buck stops there. Is there a place, have, have the roles changed? It, I, I thought that, that we in the planning and zoning commission looked at special use permits, planned unit developments. Requests for annexation, changes to the comprehensive plan. I, I think that's it, that something had to have one or more of those elements in order to come before the commission. And now it looks like the hearing examiner is allowed to do special use permits, were they always allowed to?
They were, they were, so the hearing examiner has always been allowed to do everything that the commission can do. With the exception, they cannot do comp plan amendments and she cannot do annexations.
Okay, would it be helpful to, to create like a table that shows the responsibilities, where they overlap, where they don't overlap?
We have what, I'm sorry?
We have that, but it's just not in the definition.
No, it's not in the definition, but you'll find it under, in article one. I believe, under authority and purpose. Um, where I mentioned that I went into the plan and. Updated the planning and zoning commission and then updated the hearing examiner, gave it its own title to, to clarify more. In that section in article one. So it's further up under title and purpose, I don't have the cheat sheet in front of me, so I don't know what section it is, I didn't print off chapter one.
Yeah.
One oh two, and page four of the pack, of the document that we have, starts on page four of the document.
Yeah, so that clarifies what the commission can do versus what the hearing examiner can do. And that's actually by state statute. So Idaho state statute says a hearing examiner cannot do annexations and they cannot do comp plan amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, pressing on, uh, definition two sixty eight, infill development. And uh, it changed from wa- being applicable to lots, uh, twenty acres or less to five acres or less. Can you, can you describe why that hap- was done?
Yeah, we changed it to that because when we do come back with an infill development ordinance, or even currently in the plan unit development ordinance. You can qualify for flexibility in the code based on that infill definition. And. Other cities have lower acreage for infill because. Generally at about twenty acres, you should have enough acreage to, to be able to comply with the codes. Where anywhere around five, up to maybe ten, depending on the site. You struggle a little bit more with making it pencil out because of all the sidewalk, curb gutter landscaping and all that. So we reduced it from twenty to five because. We feel like from staff, from our professional opinion and our research that. We shouldn't be giving away the farm, right, we shouldn't be allowing people to come in with twenty acres and get a bunch of flexibility in the code. When they could probably make it work, and a true infill piece is not only, doesn't all, just mean it's surrounded by city. But it means that it's, it's hard to develop, it's hard to redevelop that site because of. How small it is and all the requirements, does that help?
Yeah, when I read this, enough, it, this actually creates a more rigorous.
Right.
Responsibility on the developer, um, to just be particularly thoughtful.
Yes.
Which I, I appreciated when I reviewed that.
So pressing on, definition three fifty nine, parkway. And I read that and, and I, and I thought, you know, it, the term is commonly used for roads. And in this instance, it's used as for a parking strip area, i- is, is that?
Commissioner Butros, that's true, it, I've, it's used both ways, I agree, but it is related to that little where you have curb. And then that park strip.
Could you just use parking strip area to review, re- remove any ambiguity?
I guess we could, yeah, we could put parking strip area, I guess the only objection to that would be it's not always adjacent to parking. It's adjacent to the roadway, so that's where I think the park way kind of bridges the gap, I've, I've heard it both ways and I've. Heard it confuse people and I've heard people know immediately what it is, so I, it's hard.
So, so you should know, I already gave up on aviation.
Yeah. Me too.
In thirty eight years in aviation, I never heard that term used once. I've, oh, I looked it up online and the only context I have for it is in land use. It's a term that seems to be peculiar to your, your profession. Okay, um, definition four twenty eight, large equipment sales and rental. And the new language removes storage and servicing of equipment, and please discuss why that change was made. The, the, wha- what, what caught my attention is when you have something like large equipment sales and rental. Say a small bulldozer, that it may break and they may try to repair it on site. And that looks like it would be prohibited.
Um, Commissioner Butros, that wasn't the intent, the intent was for it to be ancillary to the main use of rental. Um, and so we created another category for actually storage of those. Um, and for retail sales. Um, we could always clarify that definition by putting ancillary, what we don't want is for somebody to be. Doing the rental and then their storage becomes as large. As the rental and now they're storing a bunch of equipment on site. Um, that was the purpose, so maybe we can, can you add a note that we could just put like ancillary storage? And we can maybe just define what that means.
Okay, and that was the end of everything I had on article one.
Nice, perfect, no, good feedback, thank you.
Any other questions? Um, I think it was said at the beginning, but just kudos to staff, this is a large lift and, um, very. A lot of work, so I just appreciate the effort, just wanna make sure that, that's said, and I know I heard other commissioners say that as well.
Yeah, sorry Chair, one, one quick question, does, do we have the attorneys review this before it gets through? Okay, so they're gonna view it before it goes to council or after council or somewhere in the mail?
They'll review it before it goes to council.
Cool, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so article two, um, article two is our chapter that is regulations applicable to all zoning districts, is that correct? Okay, I should have put the title on here. So the main thing we did in this one is we deleted all the land use schedules and the dimensional standards. Because again, we're moving those into articles five through nine. And we'll have a land use schedule specific for residential, specific for commercial, et cetera. Um, this chapter also contained the regulations for accessory uses. We're deleting that out of here, because that's one of those ones that's gonna move to article twelve, which is the specific use provisions. Um, we did add a few new provisions, minor for just access to streets. Uh, noxious uses was already in our code, we just located it here. We did create a little bit more robust, we had some language for property and building maintenance. But we wanted to make this a little bit more robust for enforcement of it, so we made it a little bit more detailed. The parking regulations are in this chapter, we're gonna save those till the end, because those are more detailed and we know that there's. That's kind of a hot topic is parking, so we'll save that to the end. Um, the sign regulations, complete overhaul. Um, mainly because there is land use case law on signs. That you have to be content neutral. So you can't say. You can have a real estate sign on your property that advertises for sale. Because now you're telling them what they can put in their sign. You can't say in the sign code that. Off premise billboards are a sign that advertises something that's not on the site. Because now you're regulating content. And that's, that's against the law, so we can't do that. So we have rewritten our sign code to be content neutral, if you notice, it doesn't specify like. Real estate sign, political sign. Whatever, it just basically specifies the type of sign, like whether it's a pole sign or a freestanding sign. The size, the height, where it can be, doesn't talk anything about content. So we've amended the whole thing. What we have done is we have deleted the allowance for freestanding pole signs. This doesn't have an impact on developers, in fact, though, they won't care, a lot of jurisdictions have done this already. What that means is a monument sign and a pole sign, they're both freestanding signs. A monument sign has a base on it and it's usually. You know, either the same width or maybe a little larger than the sign itself, it just looks nicer, has materials. A pole sign, it can be one pole, it can be two poles, but it's just a metal pole. So what we've said is you can't do freestanding pole signs. You have to do a monument sign, so you have to have a base on it, you have to make it look nice. It can be fifteen foot tall. But it can't just be this ugly metal pole that's gonna rust over time, that looks really disgusting. So we've done away with freestanding pole signs with the exception. Of what we now call freeway oriented signs. In parentheses, billboards, we can't call them off premise signs anymore. They can still do those on a pole sign, but what we've said is you can only have those if you're within five hundred feet of the interstate. So what we don't want is a gigantic billboard in our downtown. We don't want a gigantic billboard on Caldwell Boulevard. So really just trying to clean up some of the signage. We also did away with the allowance for having this standalone reader board sign. Which could either be an electronic reader board or the kind you change out the letters. You can still have them, but it has to be built in to either a wall sign. Or your monument sign, but you can't just have a reader board sitting out there just by itself. So just trying to beautify things a little bit. We adjusted the size of the signage, and there actually is statistics behind why we did this, there was a study. By a sign. Consultant, but they also went off the transportation. There is signage based on the type of road. Because that type of road then is correlates to the speed limit. And so there are signage statistics on how tall or large a sign has to be. On how fast traffic is going, or how wide a roadway is. So we've changed all our tables based on the type of roadway, whether it's a major arterial or a highway or an interstate. We did make a couple of adjustments from what you have tonight based on the. Um, feedback we got from the Brighton thing, because I think there, there is a lot uh to consider there where. We did rate the arterials and the highways the same way and we didn't mean to, so we did increase. The ones that are along like highway twenty twenty six or the interstate just slightly, I think we increased it to a hundred square feet. But what we also said was that. If they did that.
Yeah, like within like a commercial park, so to speak, let's say you have multiple parcels or buildings that are tucked away in the back, this is when you would see those taller. Bigger shared monument signs, we're saying, if you can do that and have more square footage. But the one that you also probably want right next to your building now cannot meet the arterial standard or whatever, it needs to meet the local street.
The local road, so it'd be small.
Just to, as a give and take, of saying, fine, you can have that one to get people from the highway, but the internal one, no, don't get both.
Um, the rest of this stuff in there was just really clarifying, like trying to break it down for people more on like. If you're a residential property, you can have this, if you're a non-residential property, you can have this. But again, not regulating what the sign says, just size, height, location, maybe design. Um, color. Um, and that's about it. And let's see, was there anything else? Fencing regulations, there was very minor updates to the fencing. Home occupations was in this chapter. It's be, oh, sorry, am I on the wrong one?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go, yeah, mi- minor changes to the fencing, moved home occupations and daycare. Again, to article twelve. Specific use provisions. This is where we then moved the landscaping into this section, because it's applicable to all zoning districts. We're gonna save this for the end, there's a lot of changes to the landscaping and hopefully you will like it, because it's a ver- it's a more robust landscaping. And then on the, all the other ones, these are all ones that we de- that we uh deleted and moved to article twelve, and so these sections are just being deleted. Because they're, they're no longer serving any purpose. The student burg one, um, where I say this section was not being used, ten oh two twelve. It said student burg on it, but when you opened it up, it said repealed, it was just a vacant. Section, because they had already moved it. So this is just moving those to article twelve and deleting them. I think that's it, any questions on article two?
I, I have several, but again.
Go ahead, I, I kind of asked my questions, I made my comments as she went along, go ahead.
Okay, um, on ten oh two oh three, the noxious uses. Uh, paragraphs one, two, three and four contain language that's vague and subject to interpretation. In counterpoint to that, paragraph five has, i- is great, it's got language that refers to regulations and standards of the fire department. Which is a verifiable source of requirements, I'd like to see that happen for paragraphs one, two, three and four. So that, uh, if somebody, if, if I were a developer and, and I'm looking at this noxious use paragraph, I'd wanna know where I go. To find the authority to get my details on what is or is not considered a noxious use.
Um, yeah, we can work on that, those are, I don't know why that's underlined, I mean, well, it's underlined because we had to move it, but that's not a new code section, we didn't change anything that was existing.
Um, and then, uh, ten oh two oh four, property and building maintenance, each, each paragraph should add a reference to the authority. Which determines if a property is in violation, is there a city inspection department?
That'd be our code compliance.
Yeah, so, so if it had a reference.
And then building, building department code compliance.
Or, or even at a higher level, if, if something like, um, there's code compliance that determines if the following sections. Aren't compliant or not, some, just something like that, again, so somebody reading this understands where they go to determine compliance.
Okay.
Okay, um, ten oh two oh five, paragraph B, which is driveway and garage parking space requirements. That, that paragraph directs parking space requirements to include parking spaces in a garage towards the minimum. Parking space requirement, and this has actually come up before us, before the commission in the past. And I objected to that then, because people often use the garage for something other than parking. And, and I thought, yeah, I, I would rather not see. Uh, a, a, an applicant get credit for the inside of a garage towards the parking space requirement. Because it means that they're taking the authority of how that garage is used away from the homeowner.
The intent of the space, the sizes. The intent of the space, the sizes depicted there is not intended for the garage spaces, it's intended for the driveway.
No, they're just getting credit for the count.
Yes and no, if they have a driveway, then that's the two that's required. If they have more than that, then theoretically, yes, but.
This is existing language, though, in the code, right?
All of that's existing, yeah.
Yeah, and it was existing before, because we, it actually came before us.
Yeah.
But I would like to see that go away, I would like to, I would, I would like to see that the applicant could not take any credit for the inside of the garage, those spaces. Okay, pressing on.
Hold on, I, I just, as we're, as I'm processing that, why, why wouldn't they, I mean, because the, I mean, we could still extend that logic is, we can't restrict what they do in the driveway either, but that would be, the intention of that would be for a parking spot, so, I mean, there may be some code things, there would be limits if it was a distraction or if it was in a subdivision, but.
And, and, and my response is that people commonly use the inside of the garage for other purposes. For example, I have a three car garage that does not take any cars. It's got a woodworking shop in it, and I don't have another place to do that, so if I were, if I, if, if control of my garage was taken away from me, I would not be able to do other things that I wanna do on my property.
But I don't think control's taken away, because you think that the homeowner is gaining credit, if you will, for having that space.
No, it's the builder who's gaining credit. They're gonna give you a parking space count that includes the inside of the garage.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with you both, I would wanna meet you halfway and say half, I don't know that we could say zero, but I do, I do agree that it is, at least for every person, well, the people that I know on Caldwell, ninety percent of them, their garage is storage unit. I have, can park on all three of my bays, but I am not normal, most people cannot park on all of their parking spots. So, I, I would think that it would be a good thing to reconsider, and I think either half or zero, but I don't, I, zero seems a little aggressive, because the, the developer is taking on the burden of that, and I do agree parking is sensitive now, so.
So when it comes to the single family, the only way this really becomes an issue is if we require more parking for the single family, council has not directed us to do that, so we've kept that minimum as two per dwelling for the single family, and very, very, very rarely do you see anything built without like a two car garage and a double wide driveway, right, so they're not, they're not really getting credit, because they really have four, but we only count the two, so they, they are, but they aren't, I mean, other jurisdictions require vastly more parking for single family, and they have to count the garages, otherwise you would never have anything except driveways across everybody's front yard, because you'd never be able to fit anything. You know, like, as an example, Merton requires six spaces for a five bedroom home. Is what it is, but they count the three car garage and the three in the driveway for that. We kind of do the same thing in the sense of we only are requiring two per dwelling, so if you happen to have a three car garage and a three wide, three car wide driveway, then of course you're, you have more. So we're not really giving them credit unless we were to ask for more, which we're not, so.
Because it's per dwelling, it's not per subdivision. You only get that on multifamily, when you get multifamily, then that's a whole different scenario. I guess my only concern, I see what you're saying, and it's valid, because I can't park in my garage either, because I have too much stuff in there. But I feel like, I, I feel like it penalizes the people, though, that really are parking in their garage, that they now long, cannot count that as parking.
I mean, they could still park in their garage, it's, it's not a homeowner penalty, it is on getting the total number of parking spaces in a given application counted. And if you don't count inside the garage, then that, I think, is a more realistic assessment of how many parking spaces are really there.
Well, I think it really, the impact really would be around situations where there would be some sort of variance, right? For the most part, and from a practical standpoint, I know we've seen some where things have been shorter, like the townhomes, and so there may not be a driveway, you just kinda roll into the garage, but from a real practical standpoint, the situations where this would, or nuance, a different set of nuance would apply, would be come before some sort of body, I would presume, through a, some sort of PUD or some sort of other process, right?
I mean, maybe, we were just talking about like, what if you had cottage housing, patio homes, that are alley loaded, and so they have two garages, or one car or two car, but they don't have driveways. So now you've got a cottage development that won't be able to comply if we don't let them count inside the garage.
Right, or, or they're forced to park someplace around the corner.
Right, and I, and I think that's gonna create a whole nother can of worms, with forcing them to park offsite.
Well, I also think about, like, from a, I, I think you use the term beautification standpoint, do we, then we're asking these special areas to, to build parking lots, is that the best space, or could that, that space used to be for green space, or something like that, which would be much more visually appealing, and, you know, for our community as a whole than having a bunch of communities, and then we've done it, right, as that one-off situations where we do have parking lots to accommodate, but, yeah, I think we, we increase those opportunities to see lots of parking lots when, if we don't allow for those spaces.
Yeah, and, and I could, I could see the point in something like one of these alley loaded cottages, where it's, when the people buy that, they understand there's no other place to put the car but in the garage.
Sure.
Okay, pressing on. Section ten oh two oh five, paragraph J dot two contains a maximum number of parking spaces for non-residential uses, which doesn't seem to meet the needs of an auto rental agency, or a gym, or other non-residential uses that might need more parking spaces, and which may exceed the fifty percent increase that can be authorized by the director. So it, this, this may be a kind of misplaced concern, there may be some other place in the code that treats these separately, so they can actually have enough parking spaces for their customers.
Yeah, Commissioner Butros, regarding your specific about like a, a car dealership or something, that is further in the code, or it has specifics, you have to have one for each of the cars you're gonna sell, plus some office space. I guess, because that's more specific, that would supersede if there was a one per two hundred overall, because of course the, the land area is gonna be vastly exceeding the building area, which is what that is based off of, but the overall intent is to try to refrain from these exorbitant parking lots, where you have somebody who just, for whatever reason, decides they want to build a massive parking lot that is never full, for whatever reason, and just help us not be overparked, because that is a, an issue in many different ways.
So as long as the code contains a provision for a use that legitimately needs more parking, that there's a way for them to achieve that, that, that would address my concern.
Fair, understood.
Okay, pressing on. In that same paragraph, table two, and I'm sorry, this is gonna seem silly. It seems to impose a post hoc limit on the number of employees, an example. An automotive car wash requires two stacking spaces per service bay and or one parking space per employee with a maximum of two parking spaces per employee. If a facility is built with fewer parking spaces than grows over time, they wouldn't be able to hire more employees than the two space per employee maximum. If they have three employees and six spaces, they couldn't add more employees unless they added parking spaces, did I read this correctly, or is this silly?
I think theoretically you're right. That wasn't the intent, and so a lot of cities, full transparency, do not have a maximum parking. I, as a planner, appreciate that Caldwell does, because it helps alleviate some of this overparking opportunity, where we have these seas of asphalt that just create heat gain and are useless overall. You know, for one event, that you happen to have sixty cars, but otherwise you have twenty, what's the rest of that space doing the rest of the time, sitting there, doing nothing? So there's, that's why the maximum is there, in this case, I do understand your point with the number of employees. You did like that, that is, the reason why that's not in more of these, because it is in the current code, it has a lot more of these per employee things, that's really hard to track, I'm not going out there and counting the number of employees.
Yeah.
The reason why this is there only for the car washes is more so because if all of the bluebirds and the metros and whatever else, if you notice, very few of them have any parking spaces for any of the employees beyond the vacuum stalls, so the point is, is try to force them to give some additional parking rather than the vacuum stalls, because those can get full, I've been in a place where I've had to wait after I wash my car, because they're all full, and I don't even know where the employees parked, because they're SOLO.
And it's probably a moot issue, that if they did add additional employees, no one is gonna come and do a head count on their employees.
Correct.
No.
But overall, I guess we could just strike it.
It seems like there'd be a, a better way than doing it by the, the employee count, but, but it's not worth pursuing. That was everything I had in Article two.
Okay.
That was it?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go to.
Article three.
Yeah, we'll go to Article three.
We're averaging half an hour per article, this would be fun.
Uh, so. We're through the bigger sections.
Yes.
So Article three is our administrative section. So this is, again, minor editorial edits to clarify special use permit processes. As you can see, when we did the language, it's, it's the same language, we've just kinda reworded it. But then we also included in there about the reduction in setbacks and stuff, that's already in the code. But it's buried in the land use tables, and we thought it's better to also have it in here, so it's front and center, and it clarifies the process. So we just added the language. And then the second one under nine is just, again, the, the sentence we're striking is exactly the same, we just reworded it, because it, it didn't sound as good. And it seemed to be a little confusing for people, so we tried to reword it a little bit. Let's see. Ten oh three thirteen, oh, yeah. So we created a whole design review process. We had a design review process in the downtown section of the code. It wasn't very detailed, it didn't give any guidance on when things should be staff level versus board level or commission level. It didn't give any guidance on, was it just the downtown, you know, or was it, you know, other areas? Because we are proposing to have a lot more overlay zones that we'll get to here in the code, and along your major gateways and corridors, we're proposing that we have design reviews, so we have a little bit better look at those buildings that are on our major corridors coming into town. We're also proposing that in downtown, that design review is not just city center, it should be all of downtown. Because it's still downtown. So we kinda tried to create some, some guidelines based on that, on just the different types of review. And try to distinguish, and this is, again, what other jurisdictions do, a lot of this is very similar to what they're doing, where stuff like signs, or if it's a development less than fifty dwelling units, that maybe could be done at staff level, surface parking lots, exterior renovations, repainting, minor stuff. But then the commission would do all of the other stuff that doesn't fall into that minor category. So those, they would do any kind of standalone building that's more than five thousand square feet, and they would do any standalone industrial building that's more than twenty thousand square feet. So.
So for, as an example, the fifty dwelling unit topic, are, what happens in the design review that's different than would happen in a public hearing before the commission?
So what would happen is staff would have an opportunity to review that upfront, to make sure they're complying with the code, that's what it is. Because we are writing codes now, it is not in this package yet, but we will have coming to you some base design guidelines for residential, so that we can help with some of these subdivisions that have these homes that are just square boxes with one type of material, not very appealing. So it'll be something basic, like two materials, or three materials, or two colors, and, and so it, what staff will do is review that before it comes to you guys, so we can tell you we've reviewed it in accordance with the guidelines, and it seems to meet, but you'll also have the opportunity for feedback.
And sound, I mean, it doesn't seem to be dissimilar to the roundtables you have with developers right now,
Absolutely.
which is ensuring compliance before they spend even more resources and it gets
Absolutely.
to, to a hearing body.
Yeah, we basically wanna make sure that when it comes to you, it's, it's
A little more finished.
A little more finished, I mean, obviously that you may have changes or whatever, and that's fine, but at least we've given it a look, and you've got a somewhat complete package when it comes to you. And then again, the next one is the density bonus program, and we're gonna save that for the end, because I know that that's a critical component that we wanna talk more about. So any questions on just those two sections that we?
Not the density bonus.
Put in, not density bonus, but just the design review and the special use permits.
I don't for those, yeah, a minor for the density.
Okay. Paragraph F talks about a reduction in the required setbacks of a zone, or an increase in maximum height allowed by a zone may be permitted with the approval of an SUP, only where specifically stated within the code. And then, and then I heard you say that that does exist, could you add a reference to where that is in the code?
It's in multiple, like footnotes, it's in multiple other subsections, there, it would be a very, very long list.
Oh.
Yeah. It'd be like table two and ten oh two oh seven, table three and ten oh two oh nine dash seventeen, it would be really difficult to list each individual one.
Could you add a note that says contained within the various land use tables and their associated footnotes? So that, that, at least somebody then understands where to go look, because that makes sense.
I think that's where they all are, isn't it then?
True, I think it, to your point, works the other way, is that most people would be, look, they, this section, I have never had an applicant ask me about, overall.
Oh, they're gonna go straight to the other section.
They go straight to the land use tables and look at that, and then that will references those.
And it references those.
Alright, that's, that's fine. So in ten oh three thirteen dash one, the general provisions, paragraphs A through G are unenforceable and look out of place, kind of similar to the other comment I made. And I thought, if the section on types of design review preceded those paragraphs, then a reader would understand that they're guidance to the design review commission. So it's just switching the way the information is presented, makes it clearer what the intent is, and makes those paragraphs appropriate.
Yes, just so you know, though, this is not suppo- that particular section is not supposed to be enforceable. That's just telling you the intent, the intent of the ordinance itself.
And, and that's why I said, then i- if you put the section describing the types of design review, precede those paragraphs, and then it's clear what's, what, what's happening, and it's appropriate as a, then it becomes appropriate.
The types of design review above the intent of the ordinance?
Before paragraph A. Just moving, moving the types of design review, which are in paragraph three, moved before thirteen dash one, the general provisions. So you begin with saying, these are the types of design review, and then you give the paragraph on general provisions.
I mean, I, I don't have any opposition to it, it's just generally in ordinances, you have the intent of the ordinance first, then you have, what's it applicable to after? So this is usually the format of an ordinance.
It kinda goes from bigger to smaller.
The purpose and intent, and then what is it applicable to? I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, it's just this is usually just the way ordinances are written.
And I, my concern would be just how, then it needs to follow the same process or formatting as the rest of, of our ordinances, and, and make sense, I mean, because I, to, to the point, I mean, you look at legislation stuff, it always starts with a general purpose, and it, and it works from bigger to smaller.
And, and then I had something on density bonus, but we'll hold that until, until the end, that was everything I had on Article three.
Perfect, and we, and we do appreciate your comments.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just because we might say, well, this is why we're doing it, we do it, definitely appreciate the comments. You've had a lot of good feedback that we can make changes to.
Yeah, I would, I appreciate hearing words versus crickets, so.
Yeah, definitely.
It's nice to have feedback.
With that, I'm gonna call a five minute break, I need to take a quick break, sorry, guys.
No, no worries.
No, yeah.
We can do that. All right, we'll go ahead and start back up. Thank you for allowing the break.
Okay, so I'm first gonna start off with a slide that's Article five through nine. The reason I'm doing this is because you probably noticed in your packet. These are really common amendments that I'm gonna go through that are in every single article that we're gonna talk about. And then I'll go through the detailed ones in each one. So in each one, we created obviously an intent applicability, the zoning district name table and the explanation of the land use table acronyms, like what does SUP mean? What is um P mean? What is T U P mean? Um, the zoning purpose statements, we moved them from Article one into their own articles. So we moved the ones for residential into five, commercial into six, and so on. In each one of these, we created a specific land use table and dimensional standards table specific to that district. We consolidated some land uses into main categories like we kind of briefly talked about with restaurants, retail. Um, we also broke some out that we can talk about um so that we could regulate them a little bit better um as far as size. Um, amendments, we did some amendments to the permitted and specially permitted land uses. Some of that was based on the comp plans, some of it was based on council feedback. Some of it was based on us just reviewing the code and saying, okay, from a a land use perspective, I don't know that this makes sense in this zone. Like for instance, when I get to it in the industrial zone, it still showed you could have manufactured homes and mobile homes in the industrial zone and also in the commercial zone. Doesn't make sense. We should we shouldn't be having that in our commercial and industrial zones, so we removed that. One really good change that I hope that you will all like is that in our current code, multifamily does not start until seven dwelling units or more. In this code, we're starting more multifamily at three dwelling units, so triplexes and up become multifamily. So what does that mean? That means that they now have to comply, and that is in that's in accordance with the building codes too. Because building codes recognize them as commercial when they go to three dwelling units or more. They come out of the IBC instead of the IRC. Um, very similar to what most jurisdictions do. Some are a little bit different. Some start at two, some start at four, most start at three. Um, but what this does is the multifamily development code that Joe wrote that is very robust. Um, that has greater landscaping requirements, greater setback requirements, more regulations if you're next to single family. Three dwelling units and more are gonna have to comply with that now. So um this will help with some of the concerns we've seen on projects um where you have multifamily. So we're hoping that this is a good change and that everybody um likes this as we move forward. Again, these are codes too. Even if we adopt them, we can amend them. So if something doesn't work, as commissioners, you have the authority to ask us to relook at certain codes. So you can, we can always do that too, because sometimes when you change things, you change it and then you have to see that, oh, well, that didn't work like I thought it was gonna work. And you have to change it back. Um, we did split townhomes into two categories. We split them into three or less in a row or four or more. The reason we did this is because of massing of the buildings, right? When you start to get four townhomes or more in a row, that building starts to look really big. And so we want to regulate those differently in the land use code. So maybe some zones, three in a row is appropriate. But maybe there needs to be more regulations when you get four or more in a row, because that building starts to look pretty big or can be pretty big. Um, does everybody on here know the difference between a townhome and like a duplex or a triplex or a fourplex?
I think I do, but we tell.
Because I think it's helpful to know, because I don't know that everybody does. So you might have three ti- three townhomes in a row, and sometimes people will think that's multifamily, triplex. It's not. It's single family. The difference is townhomes, even though there's three in a row, they share common walls. They're on their own individual property and they are sold individually. They are owned. A triplex, three units in a row, all in the same building, all on the same parcel. The building is sold as a whole, not the individual units, unless they condo them. They could condo them. But that's really the major difference is triplex are usually more rental units. And then townhomes are actually considered single family, because they are sold individually. Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Um, we added important critical footnotes into there, one being the fact that um, you know, next to single family, if you've got multifamily. Um, we changed the way setbacks are measured. Our current code had some funky language in it that said you measured setbacks from the back of the sidewalk. And if there wasn't a sidewalk, then you measure it from the property line. And I'm kind of like, shouldn't the setbacks always be measured from the property line? So we did change the way the setbacks are measured. We do have some allowances in there for the smaller um areas in our city like the historic district where you those lots are really constrained, where we might allow them to go ahead and measure those setbacks from the back of the sidewalk. But we've changed it in all the other zones. You have to measure it from the property line. Um, we changed the way we measure the height. You're gonna see in the height table that things increased by five feet. The height didn't actually crease increase. We just changed the way we measure it. The current code says you measure it to the average height of the roof. So when things would come before you and you'd say it has to be twenty-five feet, that's to the average, where in reality, the building probably was thirty feet. So we've changed it now to thirty feet, but you're measuring from the highest part of the roof. Because now you're really getting an accurate measurement, because even at the average, you might have projections or something that are even higher. So although you're seeing the increase by five feet in the table, it's probably actually a more accurate measurement that we're gonna be getting out there. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Some of the other common amendments I just wanted to go through really quick. We have a a mixed use small scale, a mixed use large scale. I'll explain a little bit about what that is. A mixed use small scale where it's got vertical next to it, it's exactly what it means. The mixed use is vertical. It's in it's in a single building. On the bottom is gonna be required to have active uses like retail, restaurant, whatever. The residential, if it has it, has to be on the upper floors. We broke it out purposely because some zones, it might be okay to have a single building with some mixed use. But you may not want that, or you may not want that in some zones, or you you may want it in some zones. Um, but the more important one was the large scale, because it's horis- it can be horizontal or vertical. Horizontal means they could have multiple buildings. Those buildings could be multiple stories. But they're mixed use. They could have commercial in the front, residential in the back. They could have a mixture. But it's a much larger scale project, so we want to regulate those differently. So like large scale is only gonna be allowed in certain zones. And then Joe has done a fantastic job, and he'll get to that, at creating some mixed use provisions. Because I know some of the concern was mixed use along the boulevard and stuff. Is that gonna eat up our commercial ground? Well, what he's done, and I'm gonna steal a little bit of your thunder, is that we've said if you're gonna do mixed use with multifamily along the boulevard in a commercial zone, you have to have commercial on the street frontage. The multifamily either has to be above or behind. And the multifamily cannot take up more than forty percent of the land. That helps ensure that we have sixty percent commercial and they're not eating up our commercial land. So there's some provisions in there for that. We added a category, emergency shelters used to just come under homeless shelters. But what we found is we have currently a domestic violence shelter in town. Those currently with a homeless shelter requires an SUP. You don't want to require an SUP with a domestic violence shelter, a trafficking shelter, a sexual exploitation shelter. You want those to be secretive and private to protect the survivors that are in them. So we created a separate section of the code. That just gave me chills, even saying that. But we created a separate category so we could make those a permitted use, but not the other ones. And so if that makes sense, because you want those to be private. You don't want them to be found out where they're at. Um.
Thank you for the thoughtfulness on that.
Thank you. We created a category for community gardens, because we feel it's really important in our community. It might be a a great use, especially like maybe in downtown or traditional neighborhood. Um, we did create a category for correctional detention facilities. The reason we did this is there's only one category right now in the code for public buildings or facilities. A lot of public buildings, you may want them to be permitted uses. A correctional detention facility, I say you don't want that to be a permitted use. You want that to have an SUP. You want to have the opportunity to review that and have comments. So we created a separate category for this. Um, the county might be mad at us, but we did create this category. Cottage industries, um, this is a little bit different. You'll see in the code, there's obviously there's um artisan craftsman industries. That's more industrial, commercial land. These are cottage industries for residential, so traditional neighborhood, for instance. They might want to have a little entrepreneurial business that they're trying to build up. And they want to sell things out of there, like maybe they're making candles or something. Where with a home occupation, you can't sell stuff out of your house. This, they could sell stuff. They're still gonna be limited to size and that type of thing. But it allows us to have a little bit more, um, I would call them entrepreneurial incubators where people can grow a homegrown business. Um, there are some limitations to what they can sell and stuff like that within that. Um, we created a separate category for caretaker. It was all covered under security guard quarters, which didn't make sense. Because a a caretaker is very different than a security guard. A security guard quarters, you're not necessarily living in those, where a dwelling caretaker, you're living in them, so we're regulating those separately. We created a separate category for boutique hotels. The difference between this is you're limited to, I believe it's a hundred rooms in the boutique hotel. Where a hotel could be a lot larger, like we've seen some of the hotels in downtown Boise. So maybe a boutique hotel is a great fit for downtown. But maybe a huge hotel is not a great fit for our little downtown, so we've created that category. We also created a long-term extended stay hotel, because those have a little bit different um impact to the community. So we're regulating that separately. We created a cottage courts cottage housing uh category, because we haven't had one before. We've had a lot of interest in patio homes, cottage courts housing. Um, if you don't know what cottage courts are, they are basically single family homes. Um, they're usually, they they don't have to be, but they're usually on one lot. They can be in a subdivision, but they share common space. So they're usual, a lot of times they're built where they face the inside. And that's all like their common backyard or whatever. We created a category for live work, which we think is fantastic. There are requirements in there. A live work facility is where you have a business downstairs. But the person that owns the business is the person that lives upstairs. It cannot be different. It can't be a different business or whatever. Um, and there are guidelines in there for that. Um, flex space, again, another entrepreneurial incubator category. These are smaller spaces where somebody might have a little warehouse or or maybe a manufacturing in the back, but up front they have like offices or retail or a little showroom or something. But they're small, they're not massive. Um, a lot of jurisdictions have flex space. Um, we also created a category for mobile food unit parks. We've always had the, you know, the temporary use permits or the mobile food unit permits. But we really didn't have any guidance on what if somebody wanted to do kind of a permanent mobile food park and just rotate mobile food vendors out of there. So we created a land use and then Joe created some specific use provisions for it. Retail sales lots, these are to address a lot of the ones that we, the code was silent on. Like the person that wants to sell um tiny homes off of a property. Or they just want to set up a a sales lot and put garage, you know, storage sheds on there and sell just these storage sheds. So we really want to regulate those, because you don't always have like an office space or whatever. Sometimes it's just a lot with a bunch of stuff on it. So we've added that with specific use provisions. Um, created a category for a day shelter. This might be one where this is where you get kicked out of the homeless shelter. You have a place to go during the day to stay out of the the weather, but this could also be a place where you go to get um social services. Or um, you're a person that's low income and you're homeless and you just need to take a shower. And it provides a shower for you or something like that. A lot of these do have a special use permit criteria with them. I think there there might be some in there that are permitted use. I'm not sure. Um, and then we created a U-PIC farms. Those were the main like kind of new stuff that we did. So we'll go into five, chapter or Article five. Um, this is the residential zoning districts now, so we moved everything that had to do with manufactured homes into Article twelve. Um, we moved all the regulations from a whole bunch of various sections in the code into one central location. Um, we are proposing to reduce the minimum lot size for R two and R three zones only. Um, the lot sizes that are currently in there are really more an R one lot size, like six thousand square feet. That's pretty large for a uh high-density residential um with the densities that they have. So we are um asking to reduce that. Um, in fact, a lot of communities, um, we are not, but a lot of communities have went with getting rid of the minimum lot size and letting density just and setbacks and stuff take care of that. But we still have minimum lot sizes. Um, but again, this better aligns with the medium and high-density zone. Uh, projects still have to meet density allowances though. So they can't bring in a whole bunch of lots at a reduced lot size and think that's okay. They still have to meet density allowances. They still have to meet setbacks, all of that kind of stuff. Um, we added the density table in there. That's right out of the comp plan. The only thing we changed is we said if you're in an R one zone, you don't get density bonuses. You're prohibited. You're maxed out at the eight dwelling units per acre. And when we get to the PUD, you'll see where we've changed it in the PUD, that you cannot use a PUD to ask for increased density. You're maxed out. Unless at some point, the commission and the council decides to allow that to happen. Um, we created a section that talks about the development options. Uh, this is based on the comp plan again, because you have in the RS one, RS two, they can do conservation area development. This is basically where they can cluster their houses in one location, but then they have to deed restrict uh a percentage of land, I think it's forty percent? Forty percent of the land, they have to deed restrict it as non-buildable for agricultural purposes. They can never build on it. And that's to get the three dwelling units per acre. So that one dwelling unit per acre in the RS one, RS two, if they want that, they have to preserve forty percent of their land for ag. Um, and that's in that green area that's next to the county. And then we have the Dennis bonus uh density bonus explanation that's only applicable in the R two and R three zones. Basically just refers you to the density bonus program chapter. Um, in the land use table, there is a lot of changes. I am gonna go through kinda probably what I think have, I've heard is the most um hot topics. Um, again, made multifamily with seven or more units an S U P, and they want that at the council level. It's never been an S U P at the council level. It's always been at the commission or the hearing examiner level. The council has asked that that be at the council level. They want the final say on a multifamily project. So we are proposing that. We made accessory dwelling units a permitted use with any single-family home. Um, there's limitations to this. They have to be a certain size. They have to be located a certain place on the site. They've always been allowed, but you had to have like an S U P, I think. And really, it's not any different than having, and there's already language in there that if you have an accessory dwelling unit, the owner has to live in one of them. You know, so it really is truly like a, I call it like a granny flat or something like that. Your college kid that wants to live at home, have an accessory dwelling unit. The goal behind this is to allow people to have more property rights on their property. But also to, that this might help with some of the affordable housing um problem that's going on where the younger generation can't afford to go to college and then buy a house or whatever, so they can go to college, live at home, then go to college, come back. Um, your elderly parents, you can't afford to put them in a home, but you can build a granny flat. They can come live on the property with you. So it's just to help address different issues.
But it could just be used as an outright rental.
It could. It could. Yeah. But you can do that now with your house. You can rent it out. So, and when they get an S U P approval for it, they can rent it out. So. We did make duplexes a permitted use only in the RS one, RS two and R one zone. This is part of the comp plan, but it's also um makes sense in those zones and a single-family zone to have single-family or duplexes cuz they're both considered residential. They're not multifamily. But you can't have anything else as a permitted use in those zones.
So in the table, it looks like triplexes are not allowed in the R three zone? I think that was an error. It was like an S U P. It was struck through, but then it wasn't added as permitted.
Um, I actually don't think that was an error. I think that um in the R three zone, that is supposed to be reserved for your higher density. So your, your triplexes, fourplexes are considered missing middle housing in your townhomes. So those are more in your R one and your R two zone. And your R three is supposed to be more for your higher-density residential, because we've relocated a lot of that high-density residential along major corridors, like the interstate, highway twenty twenty-six, Carter. Um, the biggest change to the residential land use table is the allowance for neighborhood commercial uses. You, you see all this, these single-family homes everywhere, and a lot of people complain like there's nothing nearby. There's no grocery store. There's no uh little retail store. There's no restaurant or whatever. So what we've done is allowed neighborhood commercial, the smaller like retail stores, restaurants, but they have to be located along the major intersections or highway frontages. So they can't just be plopped anywhere. They're on the intersections, or if it's a highway like fifty-five or something, they can be along the frontages.
And for clarity, the major intersections would be like the arterial intersections. So, you know, the, the Linden and Eusticks, the those types of places, those major legitimate two arterials coming together intersections.
Yeah, and what this will do is, is really help provide services to those surrounding neighborhoods, which is, we heard a lot in the comp plan of people having to drive so far to go get milk or whatever. Tattoo body piercing studios, it's, it's an S U P. The other thing we heard from council was storage units. Now, what we've done in the residential, you'll have to tell us if you think it makes sense. We've done, storage units are an S U P, but they're allowed, but they're only allowed, they're still an S U P though. But they're only allowed in the residential zones, in, in these, these residential zones here. Where internal to a residential development, not open to the public, and it serves the residents of the development. So you'll see some subdivisions where they wanna have like an area where people can store their RVs or whatever. The goal behind this is to get some of those RVs and the things that need to be stored out of the front of people's yards and on the streets and have the allowance to do this, where currently we don't have the allowance where they can do that. They can do it under a P U D. But usually they want it to be open to the public, and we're saying no. It, in, in an R one zone, you, you, you can have it, but it has to be for the neighborhood, for your subdivision.
Other jurisdictions do have that as well.
Yeah.
And where it's helped residents where they're like, oh, the only storage unit facility, it's always full, or I have to drive twenty-five minutes to go get to it. This is, makes it more convenient. And where they would maybe have less stuff in the garage, because now it's in their neighborhood, and they just drive around the corner and I can go pick up my stuff whenever I want or whatever.
Any questions on article five? I know I went through that fast. I didn't go through everything, but I tried to capture the ones that were, that we've heard so far are the most critical.
Do you have any questions?
I do. I'm just trying to find it. Um, I was looking at it and then I kept scrolling and then I lost my spot. Uh, uh, Ramsey, would, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Butcher, would you like?
I, I, I can, I can go ahead. So on uh ten oh five oh two districts, it states that the regulations offer certainty for property owners, developers and neighbors about the limits of what is allowed. A- a- as you know, our experience on this commission has been that the nominal boundaries of regulations and the comprehensive plan are regularly pushed to allow greater latitude to a developer. How is the concept of certainty enforced in this code?
Um, are you, are you talking about where it talks about development flexibility?
Uh, under districts, under ten oh five oh two.
Which part?
Which part, though?
It's under intent.
The intent.
Intent portion. It's the last line.
The last line, in addition to the regulations, I was just certain you have neighbors about the limits, and what is that? That's through the land use table.
Yes.
So the permitted uses, they know they're allowed. The S U Ps, they know they have to come before a board. So that's how you give them the certainty for property owners and developments of what's allowed. Is through the land use tables. It's also through, if this gets adopted and you agree with the density bonus program, they know what densities they're allowed to have cuz it's been codified. So it's just whatever's in the regulations.
Yeah, so i- it's like it is now. It's still up to kinda the discretion of the commission.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah.
It at least outlines what they can ask for.
Yeah, the certainty is the limit. It's, it's certainly to the limits.
Right.
So I mean, it's kinda interestingly worded, but the certain, there's, it'll let, it ultimately lets you know what you, what steps you are going to have to take.
Right, and that's what we've done is tried to be more clarify processes more. Yeah.
It, it, it would be, I think, a comfort to a lot of the people that we've had come testify about development close to them to, to know that there are absolute limits and that they are not very high allowances, that the, the great flexibility developers are currently given maybe would be more tightly bounded.
Right, right. And I will say, I believe we've done that with this code. We have
A lot more guardrails and things.
A lot more boundaries of what they can do, a lot more criteria that they're gonna have to meet.
You do. It's just I, I worry about that getting shredded during the course of an application.
Yeah.
I would, I would like to see the rules adhered to. Okay, um, moving on.
When they're ordinances, they have to be.
Yeah.
Under ten oh five oh two, paragraph three C, it includes townhomes and duplexes in the R one zone. Were these included in the old R one zone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Under paragraph three D, it includes commercial activities and services that are generally only found at major intersections of arterial and collector roads, but that language differs from the R one zone by omitting the phrase may be found, which itself may be interpreted as allowing such commercial activities and services throughout an R two zone, not just at major intersections. I just want to call that to your attention. If, if it was the plan to impose the same restrictions on the commercial within the R two as are imposed on commercial within the R one, maybe match the language.
It, it's not, and I'll tell you where the difference is. On the R one, it talks about just small-scale commercial is allowed. On the R two, it says supporting or secondary land uses may include small-scale mixed-use or live-work housing units and commercial activities and services. And that's because there is more than just small-scale commercial, and it's based on the, the actual land use type. So that's why it's worded differently.
Thank you. All right, um. So uh in ten oh five oh four, sub-paragraph four, uh, it deals with setback measurements. And, and, and I'm sorry, this is education. Please explain the relationship between setbacks and easements.
So.
So, an easement could be more restrictive than the setback, is what that's saying. It's saying that
Yes.
the setback would be proposing five feet for a side setback. In some cases, there may be some type of irrigation easement that's seven feet wide.
Right.
Well, now your setback is at seven feet because you're not permitted to build over that easement.
Right.
So, so the larger value has precedence.
Correct.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you can't build on the top of easements, so.
So it, sometimes it could be the other way, right? You have your five-foot setback. Somebody comes in and claims, well, there's only a three-foot wide easement. Why can't I go to the three-foot line? Well, your setback's five foot. So it is, yes, whichever larger.
But in, but in fact, they overlay each other, so they both would have an origin, a common origin, and then the one that is further in is the one that governs.
Correct.
Thank you. Table uh five oh four, lot size. And this deals with the conservation area criteria for the RS one. And so it gives, and, and I sat here and I had to sketch this to, to figure this one out. So i- if they're meant for an RS one, a hundred-foot frontage is required, and the lot can be as small as six thousand square feet. So for a hundred-foot frontage in six thousand square feet, it's sixty feet from front to back. And then they allow the R one setback. So with an R one front set, your front yard setback of fifteen feet and a side yard setback of fifteen feet on each side, and a rear yard setback of twenty feet, the remaining open lot area is one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. It's not very big, and that seems cramped for a semi-rural zone. It, it, it seems like the conservation area criteria that, that this needs to be refigured for an RS one that, that maybe if you're doing a hundred-foot frontage or sixty-foot depth, that you're dealing with the setback somewhat differently.
So there's a couple of things. First, it's worded wrong. It shouldn't just say R one setbacks. It should say the R one dimensional standards, period. So including the frontage. So you won't be required to have the hundred-foot frontage. It would be
So that's
allowed to have the fifty-foot frontage, so that way you can then have a better opportunity to meet the six thousand square foot lot size. And the reason for that is, as Robin had explained, you want to, in these conservation area developments, consolidate the homes, and we had to reduce the proposed lot size to six thousand to meet the overall what the net acreage would be, net density would be when you do that reserve.
Right, so, so rewording to adopt all the R one
Yes.
dimensions now makes sense.
But I also think there's still a problem with it now that you brought it out. I think when we say she'll have a minimum lot size, I think we need to say that if they're using this, the lots where the houses are, cuz this makes it sound like to me that now in an RS one, they instead of having forty thousand square foot lot, they can have an eight thousand square foot lot. So I think we, and I know what you're trying to say, when they're clustering the homes.
Yeah, well, they can't have a forty thousand square foot anymore. There's no way.
Well, I know, but I mean, I think we need to clarify what that means, that the area where the homes are.
Yes.
That's the square footage, but the overall square footage of the, the lot itself is still forty thousand square feet. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Cuz I think that could be read that they can reduce a forty thousand square foot parcel down to eight thousand square foot.
Down to six thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
So is the intent for six thousand, it would be a lot more doable at eight thousand?
Yeah, and the intent was not for the whole parcel. I know what he's saying, just where they're clustering.
Right.
The lots that the houses are on, that's the lot size, but the overall lot size of the entire parcel still has to be that forty thousand or that twenty thousand square feet. But that's
Per dwelling unit.
No, just the overall.
The per dwelling does have to get reduced, otherwise you can't you can't get the, do the clustered development and meet the density or get the density that you're asking for, so.
Okay.
But I do understand your point, and yes, that there's some misuse of language there.
And if the minimum lot size was, say, eight thousand instead of six thousand square feet, it alleviates a lot of the concern about you end up with a tiny footprint.
Fair enough.
Okay, and then this, this is just an admin kinda thing. On table ten oh five oh five, the density allowance, a- as I stared at it, I realized the density bonus program column is actually used for two categories. The density bonus program and the conservation area, and maybe the title should be changed to reflect the dual usage.
That's what the footnote is for down there, but
Yeah, but it, it should be in the title.
Maybe it could be just at slash conservation area.
Yes.
Fair enough.
And that's everything I had in article five. See, it gets faster and faster.
I, I, my question, um, just, there's a couple of spots in uh land use schedule table where there, where there are um land uses, but nothing on any, in the cells next to it. So are, are they saying that those are not permitted at all in the city?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to.
Yeah, we went back and forth on do we just delete them altogether, or do we leave them in there, and that way we have more consistency through each individual article, and then the table should be relatively identical, minus some caveats in the sense that the residential one clearly has all the residential uses. You don't need to list the ones that you're not gonna permit in industrial, because you know that you're not gonna get a triplex or something in the industrial. But generally, we did that so that we could keep them very consistent.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm reading through the table ten zero five zero five and just trying to feel like it's a tiny bit confusing on the R ones with the density bonus. I mean, maybe, maybe it's clear, but it, it's at least on the top one, it, or the second one, neighborhood two, it has three. The table footnote, which says not applicable within R one.
Correct.
But all the rest of them that have R one, like urban neighborhood, is listed under R one, and it could be up to sixteen in as part of it. So I don't, I don't know. I just, it feels a little confusing to me.
That whole line within urban neighborhood, I don't believe is correct.
And it does say to reference the density program, but I mean, we, you, or you said that it's like R one zone is basically prohibited from being part of density.
Because in the urban neighborhood, you have traditional neighborhood. So you're gonna have some R one. Potential, well, potentially. I don't know, maybe not.
Maybe not, no.
But I think they, I think in the comp plan, it does say it's a compatible zoning district, so I think we just need to add the footnote.
Yeah, the footnote should be added there.
Okay, yeah, just to clarify for me or whoever's gonna read it, that R one has an exception in this one, or if it doesn't have an exception, cuz I'm reading it as
It has an exception on all of them.
Across the city.
Sorry, for the, for the density bonus.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was a good catch.
Commissioner Larson, I agree. It, it is confusing. It looks like a lot of overlapping stuff. This is one of the reasons when we were hearing the comprehensive plan, I was asking for a deep dive to, so that we could thoroughly understand what is happening in the neighborhood types and the various exceptions and rules and how all of that's applied.
So if you guys could just clarify, that would be great.
For you guys, that it is a departure of the comp plan and this table in general, what you, what zones are in what category, what place that. Very big departure from the old comp plan. There's a reason for that, being that one area of the city that's labeled low-density currently, or I guess not low on currently, may not really need R one. Maybe it does need R two. Maybe it could be, what do we got here, neighborhood two? Maybe it could be, what do we got here, neighborhood two? A C one district. Well, the old comp plan was so black and white, you could only do R one. That's it. You had no flexibility.
We haven't gotten to the overlay zones yet.
Well.
And the and the reason, the other reason for that is because of where they replaced the neighborhoods. We had to look at what is the current zoning under the new land use designations. And you don't want to say that somebody's current zoning is not compatible anymore because now you've taken away their property rights. So we wanted to make sure that, say, if, because they're zoning, right? The land use table tells them what they can have in that zone. So you want to make sure that, like if we're calling something now urban neighborhood and it currently has traditional neighborhood, R one, there's some C two properties, that you you include those, that it's a compatible zone, so that they don't have to necessarily rezone. But that's why you see a lot of changes in the land use table.
It's minimizing the number of legal nonconformities we are making.
Yes.
That's really.
Legal nonconforming uses, yep.
We we don't want to turn around and turn, make an entire subdivision now and be like, oh, well, you couldn't be here actually, but you were five years ago. You just want to minimize that.
But when when this gets incorporated and stuff comes before planning and zoning commission, it becomes incumbent on us to understand the details of this. So we are approving something that's legal.
Sure, and we've talked about that before this, that if these go through and the codes get adopted, we'd like to come back to planning and zoning and do some training. And we also want to be able to provide you more details like on approval criteria and stuff to help you understand where you're looking in the codes for when you're trying to approve something.
Or deny it.
Or deny it, yes, approve or deny, thank you, yes. I just assumed if they're approving it, they're approving it. If it's, they're not approving it, it's denied.
Any other, Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, but I forgot it, it's okay. I guess, well, I guess it came back. It's it's kind of a, so then we know old zones are grandfathered in when we re-update the code every time. Because you you added, so theoretically, we added these so everyone stays in compliance. We never update the code and go, okay, this, these homes built in two thousand and twelve are grandfathered into this, they already exist, we're not changing the zoning, doesn't really matter. They exist, this is what they were, the new update says now they're this. So this guy has to meet with matching.
Right, right. So if something is existing before this code, it's considered legal nonconforming.
If it doesn't conform.
Yeah, if, yeah, if it doesn't conform. So they can continue. What happens is if they want to tear something down, redevelop, and I don't mean by like a fire or whatever, they want to redevelop, they don't meet this, then at that time, they got to meet this.
Thank you.
Okay. Chapter six. This is your commercial zoning districts. So we moved all the provisions for RV parks to Article twelve. Moved again all the regulations from various sections on commercial districts into one location. We are proposing in here to reduce the front yard setbacks and the rear yard setbacks in the C one zone. This is to accommodate having builder, buildings placed closer to the street with the parking behind. So we've decreased the minimum setbacks so they can move them closer and decrease the minimum rear yard setback so that they can have parking back there. Again, density in this one is only applicable in the highway corridor zone. Because if, so what we've done, even though C one zone and stuff is coming into those mixed use areas, we've also said, we know that commission and stuff is going to want to look at some of those projects. So if they want to do a mixed use project with residential, they're going to have to rezone to a highway corridor zone. Thus, it'll force them to come before the commission and council. So you can't just do residential in a C one through C four zone.
And so the random, which we have a lot of like C three zones out there that are vacant, they don't automatically with the new comp plan and code, get the opportunity to do a mixed use project randomly. They would have to rezone to the highway corridor to come before us.
If it has residential with it.
If they want residential, yeah. If it's mixed use, like commercial and some type of industrial, that's different.
Trying to think if there was anything else.
I think you have another one on that.
Do I have another one?
Use, uses same as last one.
Thank you, okay. Again, made multifamily with seven or more and SUP at council level. Deleted the allowance for manufactured and mobile homes in a commercial zone. I don't know why that was still in the code because we don't allow residential in a commercial zone, like single family. Got missed. Storage units, so we did the one for residential, right? Where it can be internal, not open to the public. Commercial zone, you can do many storage units, but it's going to require an SUP at the council level, and that is council direction. It's always been an SUP, but they want to see it at the council level. This is where we split some definitions into two categories because we felt it was important to regulate the intensity. So like fitness facilities was always one category. We've split it into large fitness facilities versus small ones. Retail, there's different categories based on square footage. Mixed use, small scale, large scale. Equipment repair and service, we've split that into large equipment, small and household. And they mean different things, like household is more like washers and dryers and stuff repair. Small is computers, lawn mowers, that kind of stuff. Where your, large equipment is tractors, that type of stuff. We felt it important, it was all one category, to split it into three because those are very different intensity of land uses. Breweries were always one category. They were under winery brewery. We've split breweries into two categories, large scale, small scale. Small scale would be what used to be the micro breweries. And then the large scale breweries, we split that out. And the reason we did that is because breweries, sometimes they have a component to them where they have like a little restaurant or a little eating area or whatever. So we felt like we could probably regulate those a little differently. So we split out breweries. They're also considered manufacturing, so they could be located in a certain location separately than maybe a winery, for instance. We added distilleries category because we don't have one for that to regulate it differently because we didn't want to lump that into an industrial manufacturing category because it may not be that intense, but it still is intense enough that we want to look at it. So we split it out from that category. That's all I had on six. I guess I'll just note too that we, some of the other things we split out was we used to have a category that was just grain crop storage or silo. We've realized that we have silos that are for a lot of other things, like concrete. And so we've made it just a storage silo. And those are an SUP because those have quite a bit of impact. And then the only other thing I think that we've done differently in these that I haven't already mentioned is warehouse and storage. We used to only have one definition for general. We created a hazardous warehouse and storage because that's pretty critical to regulate that separately. And when you just have a general category, they could be storing anything in there. So now we want to know what they're storing in there so we can put them in the appropriate category.
Another question on the table, on the land use table. So it looks like it was added, an asterisk equals land use is subject to special use provisions?
Yes.
But then, so there are some that have an asterisk next to land use, but also P's for permitted and a variety of those. Can you help me understand that?
Yeah, so those mean that it's permitted, but within chapter twelve, they have specific use provisions that they will have to meet. So that's why you'll see two in this table, you'll see some that say ADR, which is administrative development review. That's not giving us any more authority than we had before. Some of these were permitted uses, but what we're saying is, before you go out there and build it, we kind of want to see it first. We want to review your site plan and stuff and make sure you're meeting code before you just submit for building permits and go out there. So we've added, it's, we do it now. We call it a site plan, landscape plan review, but we're formalizing it in the code is what we're doing.
It's usually, especially for those permitted ones, commissioners more, is when they submit the building permit, because permit, we now have other provisions beyond just saying like, well, it's permitted. I can't tell them to do X, Y, and Z, even though we want to. Now this creates those specific standards for us to hold them to. So sometimes it's buffering, sometimes it's screening of certain outdoor storage or whatever it may be. It's very helpful to have, and a lot of other jurisdictions do do this. Sometimes they regulate it. I guess more stringently, like they make them go through designer view. Like City of Boise makes a lot of what we're doing here. They'd make them go through some type of designer view, which is more than just visual designer view, but also site plan designer view. So this is a way for us to do that at the building permit level administratively and get this taken care of and regulated appropriately.
Perfect, thank you. Other questions, comments?
I I have only two on Article six. So on the bulk and dimensional standards table, a lot of the values are null. And it 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 makes sense that lot areas and setbacks are not the same as residential. But do the community development department, the P and Z commission and the hearing examiner have latitude in determining case by case suitability of lot sizes, building heights and setbacks for the location and surrounding development? It looks like where a given use is permitted, no capability exists to do this. Such capability can only be exercised when a use is by SUP. Is that true?
So yes and no. So the current code doesn't have any lot sizes for commercial. And it doesn't have any setbacks for commercial because I guess, I'm guessing that they thought that's taken care of through the building and fire codes because they're going to have setbacks. And there's going to be height requirements because they go so high, it becomes a high rise. And the higher you go, you have fire resistant rating in construction that you have to meet. Yeah, and elevators. We do still have language in here, though, that if it's a new mixed use multifamily or not, non-residential structure being built next to single family, that they have to still meet that thirty foot height unless they get a special use permit. So we still, and that's in a footnote. That's footnote number two. Yeah, so we do still have, even though they don't have a height restriction, and and as you can see, some of them did, like in C one, it used to be forty five, we're reducing it to thirty five. In the C two, there was no height restriction, we're putting it at fifty five. C three and C four, the reason we didn't do anything in there, those zones usually contain some industrial, which is sometimes built higher. But they're still going to have that restriction on height if they're next to residential.
And in general, yes, the SUP is the time that you guys get to have those specific looks, I guess you could say. But to add another layer to that, we're to answer Robin's, no, that's where the specific use provisions also come in. Because yes, it may be permitted and say zero here, but if it has a specific use provision, there's probably some type of additional buffering or screening or setback required there. And other things, reviewing site plans so often, I can tell you, there's inherent setbacks with parking. There's inherent setbacks with the trash enclosure or their access or something like that. And so there's, whether we put ten feet here or zero, it's probably going to be the ten feet in reality, just because of what they have to construct on site.
Yeah, the streetscape buffers and all that kind of stuff.
All of those things.
Yeah, so my my second question in this article is the table oh six oh five, the density allowance. And that table, when I looked at the compatible zoning districts and I saw that they're mixed, the R two, R three, as well as the C one, two, three, the HC and the PD, it highlights how very high density residential can be mixed with various levels of commercial, highway corridor and and PD. And I thought it's it's a difficult problem, what the citizens' vision is for the future of Caldwell and what a mixed use development that complies with this density allowance would look like. When we look at the density bonus here for for community center up to twenty five dwelling units per acre, mixed use center up to forty dwelling units per acre. And I and I appreciated the restrictions that are inherent in the density bonus program. And it looks like it really isn't going to get applied in that many places. But where it does get applied, it's going to look very much like an inner city, high density, high rise kind of, kind of arrangement. And and I wonder, is that really what the people of Caldwell want?
They actually did. In fact, we had people testify that they wanted more density. But I will help you with this because where it says compatible zoning districts, that doesn't mean that if you're in an R two or an R three, you can do those densities. It says in the paragraph above, the density allowances set forth below are applicable to all commercial zoning districts where residential is permitted. If you look in the land use table, the only zone where residential is permitted in a mixed use is the highway corridor. So what this compatible is, is just out of the comp plan saying that these districts are compatible in a community center land use designation. But to get that density, to get any densities, the, any density is at all, if you've got residential in a mixed use, they have to rezone to an to an HC. They won't be able to do it in an R three.
So it it doesn't occur as a combination of what's allowable?
No.
Thank you. That was everything I had on Article six.
Chair, one quick question. The industrial animal slaughterhouse on the table ten six three, it's blank and doesn't have a star? Is that, are we just saying that doesn't exist and we have to explicitly say that we don't want slaughterhouses?
I was just going to look in the industrial to see, if if we do, we probably should have one, but I don't know if we even allow it.
Maybe it's a dumb question.
Oh, we do allow it with an SUP.
Has nothing on it.
In the industrial.
In the M two.
In the M two, but in here, yeah, we're just saying it's not permitted.
Yeah, it's not permitted.
In any of these zoning districts in this table.
Yeah, when it's, when it's blank.
That would make an applicant, they might think it's going to be in a commercial district and then they're going to be like, oh, I guess not, let me go to the industrial. They see that it requires.
So some of them, we left them in here on purpose so that when they look at the conduct, like the commercial zone, they can clearly see that that is prohibited and don't even come ask it to be a similar use of something else because it's prohibited. So we kind of left them in there on purpose.
Thank you.
Okay, Article seven. Again, provisions for landscaping was moved to Article two. All regulations for industrial was moved in here. We did add a new provision that says all industrial land uses have to be in an enclosed building if they're within five hundred feet of a residential district or structure. We don't currently have that in our code. So if they are like that, they can't have outdoor industrial uses, it has to be all enclosed. We added a minimum front yard and rear yard setback because we didn't have one for industrial. We added a footnote that even though there's a setback in the table, if you're adjacent to residential, it's a forty foot setback. So that's a pretty large setback, we've never had that before. And it'll probably end up being more than that by the time you get in the landscaping, then the parking lot, whatever. We did add a maximum height requirement if located next to residential unless obtaining an SUP. And the reason when we say next to residential, just so you know, not that we're saying industrial should be next to residential because I'm a big proponent that industrial should not be next to residential. But in our industrial areas, we have a lot of existing residential structures. So even in the urban renewal area, there's a lot of existing residential structures out there. We want to make sure there's some protection for those residential when the industrial comes in, that they're not right on top of them and that they have requirements they have to meet. In the land use table, as we talked about in the comp plan, the employment area, which is the industrial area, allows commercial, it's not just industrial. So we've added an allowance for some compatible commercial uses within the zone. We already kind of had that in the current code, but it was really vague. What it said was, if this is compatible with industrial, you can have this. And it's like, okay, we need to be more specific. And that's where I got back to that letting developers know what they can and can't do. We shouldn't have a footnote that says, well, if we think it's compatible, you might be able to have it there. We shouldn't have a footnote that says, well, if we think it's compatible, you might be able to have it there. It should be either yes or no. We changed where some of the uses are allowed as M one is really supposed to be your light to medium industrial uses with M two being more of the intense industrial. And when we went through the list, we found a lot of heavy industrial uses that were allowed in the code in the M one, which should not be allowed in the M one. So there's a lot of changes in the industrial table for that. Um, we deleted a lot of land uses that are not compatible in the industrial zone. Um, we also deleted the allowance for again manufactured and mobile homes, um, and we made storage units and SUP at the council level. That was the major, major changes because a lot of the other changes are very similar to the others we already talked about.
Questions?
Questions?
In ten oh seven oh three. The uses paragraph. It says this section sets forth the permitted and specially permitted uses Caldwell's residential zoning districts. I think that was a carryover in the boilerplate.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I found another one while while we were talking on the last one that we missed.
I didn't have anything else on Article seven.
Are we good? Okay. Article eight, it's a new title, Urban Core, but basically what we did. Is we moved everything that was from the downtown into this section, everything that was in traditional neighborhood into this section. Um, we changed some. Of the text, oops, I guess I should start back here. Let me go back. This used to be the tree ordinance, we moved it out, moved everything from downtown into this. There was a lot of cleanup that needed to be made into the downtown. What we found out was. When the cr- when the city created the zoning district for downtown, they created a city center. They never actually formally established a central business district, but yet we called it out in our land use tables. And we called it out on the map, but it was never formally created. So we formally created a downtown city center and a downtown central business. And then we moved some of the stuff that they said was a zoning district, which again was not a zoning district like. The local historic. Area, they called that a zoning district, that's really an overlay for design review. Um, and then the other one was, uh. Well, the design review stuff, they called that a design review zoning district and it's not a zoning district, it's an it's an overlay. Um, Indian Creek corridor, it was an overlay, but they called it a zoning district, it wasn't. So there was a lot of cleanup in this section to make it compliant. Um, we did create a minimum lot size for the traditional neighborhood zone. There was never a minimum lights lot size in that zone for some reason, so we did give it one. We did include a minimum stories for new construction, only new construction in the downtown city center. And the downtown central business with a footnote that in the downtown central business, you could have a single story. But in the current design guidelines, the current code. And the comp plan, it specifies that new construction in city center should be a minimum of two stories. And it's really because they want that mixed use and they want those active uses on the main floor. It's not uncommon in a downtown. Um, we increased the setbacks within the T N T N zone. We reduced the maximum height from fifty five to forty. Because that really is kinda more of a neighborhood. Area with neighborhood commercial uses as well. Um, and we're now calling the traditional neighborhood, it's still a traditional neighborhood, but it's a transitional area from our downtown. It kinda surrounds um our downtown and kinda transitions into that larger commercial area. We moved all the design standards over from that we're already currently in the code for here for downtown. We made some of the text. Um, a lot of the text said should. And we're, I'm like, really should be shall. If you're gonna have design code requirements, they shouldn't be should. So where where it made sense to change them to shall, we changed them to shall. This one may or may not go over well. Um, we are proposing that vacant lots in downtown, if they are unutilized for a hundred and eighty days. And there is no plans for them, that they have to have some type of landscaping on them. This is to prevent slum and blight. Um, it could be just some rock and a, you know, tree or some shrubs or. It could be rock or gravel. We just don't wanna see dirt. Uh, lots sitting in our downtown. Um, I guess you guys can comment, a lot of jurisdictions do this. Um. It's really to to cut back on the the way they look, right? Because sometimes they get slum and blity in the downtown when it's just dirt. Um, currently, right now, you're allowed to have chain link in the downtown. We're saying no, no chain link in the downtown unless it's for a construction site. We've created more robust property and building maintenance section, very similar to the one you saw earlier in the earlier chapters. We revised the parking standards to reference the parking standards that Joe's gonna go over in Article two with a slight reduction. Um, in consideration of all, this is because a downtown environment is very, very different. Than a typical brick and mortar somewhere else. You have a lot of on-street parking where you don't have that in a lot of commercial centers. So what we're proposing, and this is actually more than what we currently have in the downtown, so I wanna preface that, that this is requiring more parking. We're saying that whatever the parking requirements are, that somebody could do half of what that is. Which, and that's half onsite. And that takes into consideration that you have. A lot of people parking on the street once and they're walking. And you don't necessarily need all these blacktop parking lots. In fact, most jurisdictions don't even have parking. Minimums in their downtown. They let it be based on market driven, like if somebody feels they need parking. But what we did do is we're requiring full compliance of parking standards for anything that's residential. So no more reductions for apartments, condos. They have to do full parking requirements for residential and it has to be on their site. Um, so whether that's a parking garage or whatever it is, they gotta make it fit. Um, this is way more than what we have right now in our code. Um, and the reason it's also way more is because Joe has actually beefed up the parking standards. Uh, when he gets to that, so this is gonna make a huge difference in downtown. But it's not gonna make it where you have a bunch of blacktop and you don't have buildings, that pedestrian environment.
So I, cause I just hearing and seeing all the comments for downtown parking in particular. So to recap, because I just, I think it's important to say it again, um, particularly with like apartment buildings that were to develop. They will be required to provide all of their own parking.
Yep.
For all their their units, um, at a specific standard as opposed to what it currently has occurred in downtown Caldwell, correct?
Yes.
Based on what's being proposed.
Full standards on their own site.
Full standards on their own site, perfect. Love to hear that. I think others will too.
And for the downtown, what I saw was with the density bonus program, as high as sixty dwelling units?
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually less than we have right now. Um, currently, we calculated it that that.
The Tillian is a hundred and ten units per acre?
Yeah.
And the sky didn't fall, so you know, let's put that out.
It's a hundred and ten units per acre, so we've decreased it down to sixty.
And they have to provide all enough parking.
And they have to provide all their own parking.
Yes, the new stuff is more restrictive.
Yeah, way more restrictive. Um.
Because the, what is it, I think maybe, did you say it? The current comp plan does not have a cap on density in the downtown. The new comp plan. Talks about it in nuances, but through the density bonus, we've we've proposed.
The old comp plan does not have a cap.
Yes, the old comp plan, correct, yeah. And the new one does.
Yeah, so you would not see a project like the Tillian. Built again.
The exact way, no.
Not the exact way. It's gonna be smaller. It would have to probably have a parking garage.
Is is that that new apartment building downtown? I didn't know what's the name.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing when we get into like a little bit of the design standards. Um, we're requiring when you do build residential, that each one has to have a minimum square footage of private space, so like a balcony. Or a little patio or something to make it more attractive, like. I mean, I still feel like if that building had balconies, it would have looked so much better. Um, that's just my personal opinion, actually, but. Um. We did revise the entire sign section again to comply with case law neutrality. We are prohibiting freestanding signs right now. You can have a a big freestanding pole sign in downtown. Which to me, I don't know, I've never seen that in a downtown, it's horrible.
It says motel.
You really want more signage that's pedestrian scale, right? So in the city center, you really should have more of like wall signs, cute little hanging signs, projecting signs. When you get into the central business, like where Albertson's is and stuff, then you could have a little monument sign. But we shouldn't be having these pole signs in city center. Um. We add, again, like we talked about, we added the requirement for all properties within downtown to comply with the design standards. Um, and the design review. Currently, the code allows you to have floodlights in downtown. We're saying you can't have them unless they're projecting into the alleys. Because we don't want them projecting like right into somebody else's storefront or something. Um. And then we added more text, you'll notice in there, there's a lot more photos, landscaping, recommended tree species. We have a downtown framework master plan that has fantastic stuff in it for downtown. The city spent a lot of money for that. They never incorporated that into the code, so we've never had any standards in our code for downtown landscaping for. Oh, you know, providing like some public space outside your building. Um, how the intersections should be built, how the, what the sidewalks should look like. So all that stuff, we pulled out of the framework master plan and codified it in the code. Um, in the land use table, some of the same stuff, multifamily seven or more, SUP at council level. We removed the allowance for gas stations, car washes, warehouse and body shops in our downtown. And in the traditional neighborhood, no longer permitted in the traditional neighborhood. Um, we prohibited drive-throughs in city center. You can still have them in central business. I think they're an SUP. Um. But no drive-throughs down in our city center. We're gonna encourage walk-up windows and those types of things. Uh, we made clubs and lodges and churches and SUP in the downtown and in the T N. A little something about churches, case law. You have to treat churches the same way as you would treat any other assembly space, otherwise it's against the law. So. If you have in downtown, like a community center that's an SUP, you can make a church an SUP. If you have a conference center and it's an SUP, you can make a church an SUP. If those are permitted, you have to permit a church, otherwise it's against the law. So we've made sure that the churches are an SUP, but so are community centers and those types of things. Um, we made triplexes and fourplexes not permitted in downtown city center and an SUP in the central business. Um, and that's because if we're gonna have density in downtown, we really wanna see more like apartments and condos, not. Triplexes and fourplexes. Um, permitted or prohibited duplexes in the downtown zones. Um, we made large hotels an SUP. A boutique hotel is okay because it's smaller scale, but if you're gonna do a large hotel, you gotta have an SUP. We did prohibit liquor stores in the downtown city center.
Uh, so so I don't see the specific term large hotel. So what I see is.
It's just hotels.
It just says lodging hotel as an SUP.
Yep.
And then long-term hotels and motels are not permitted.
Right, right. So your boutique hotel is your small ones. And the reason I say that's small versus large. In the definition, it tells you that it can only have a certain amount of rooms. So the lodging hotel is what we would consider the large hotel.
So why would the extended stay hotel be prohibited?
Uh, because it's a little different vibe um in your downtown. Um, people that come to those are really more, they might be staying there even for thirty days or something. So we really want. Those hotels that have like, you know, conference centers or convention space or whatever and that they're more transient and they're moving. More frequently in and out of downtown. It's just the difference in a downtown environment versus somewhere else. Um, we did prohibit liquor stores in the downtown city center. They're still allowed in the central business. Um, the only reason we're doing that is we feel like we really need a lot more like boutique type retail, restaurant, entertainment type venues. In that city center core area. Um, we are prohibiting retail sales with gas stations, so. Basically, no convenience stores with gas stations in the traditional neighborhood. Um, we made auto repair prohibited use in the traditional neighborhood as well. Wanna try to clean up that neighborhood. Um, it's. Been a long time coming, that they need some help over there. Um, and then we made standalone, that's supposed to stay alone, by the way, it says along, supposed to stay alone. Standalone private parking lots prohibited in the T N and downtown city center. Standalone meaning somebody just builds a parking lot and they're just gonna use it as asphalt. They have no building associated with it. They just wanna build a parking lot. That's not something you really wanna see in a pedestrian oriented environment. It's okay to have a parking lot. And this is private, right? So public, the city could still build parking lots for the public, but we don't wanna see private. Because it's it's a waste of land in your downtown. Your downtown is the most valuable land you have in your city. And you don't wanna use it for for asphalt. And that's the reason for that. Um, and that's it for Article eight. I know there's a lot in there. I will say though, a lot of that is just moved from other sections of the code. And all the new pictures and all that kinda stuff, that is already from an adopted plan with the city. It just never got codified.
I have one.
Okay.
One additional item on on Article eight.
Okay.
Um, eight oh eight dash one, uh, it's commerce on public property. And paragraph A restricts the public right-of-way use for commerce to the business immediately adjacent. And a- as as you probably know, there was a controversy not that long ago during festivals in Indian Creek Plaza. Where other vendors were setting up in front of the uh brick and mortar businesses. And this paragraph is not permitting that. How was that legally resolved? And is is this paragraph consistent with however that was legally resolved?
Will you repeat where your paragraph so I can find it as well?
Uh, so ten oh eight oh eight dash one, commerce on public property.
It's twenty-two, page twenty-two.
Yeah, is there a specific line item that you're concerned with? This was out of the current code? The use on the public right of.
The use on the public right of way is associated with a business located immediately adjacent to the public right-of-way location. And and so that that, the effect of that is that those other. Uh, vendors can't set up in front of the brick and mortar businesses. And there was a big flap in the news about that and I don't know how that was resolved. Was it determined that the city could legally restrict these other vendors?
You're talking about Indian Indian Creek?
Yeah, that's where it occurred.
Yes, they can legally restrict them in Indian Creek because that property is owned by the city. Um, in Indian Creek and it's managed by Destination Caldwell. So Destination Caldwell, what this is really talking about is the use of the sidewalk.
Yes.
In front of your business, that Indian Creek is mostly at the back of people's businesses. That's the rear.
And and I think with some of the festivals, just owning a business downtown, they don't, when they do advance, they're actually closing off the roadways. And so they're on the road and not necessarily on the sidewalk.
Okay, so.
This is more about a business that wants to.
Sidewalk sale.
A sidewalk sale for their business. And the reason we put this in there is because. Everywhere else in the code, they're not allowed to have things in the right of way. But in a downtown situation, your buildings are generally at the right-of-way line. So there's always been something in there that they can use that sidewalk for um a sign. Or they can put like a little thing out there displaying their merchandise as long as they leave room for handicap accessibility around it.
Right, but in this case, because it restricts it to the business immediately adjacent. It looks like it's favoring the brick and mortar business that's right there. It's giving that brick and mortar business. The right during that festival to use that sidewalk for their purpose and it denies that right. To other members of the public who may wish to set up and sell there.
Yeah, and the city can do that because the city controls the right of way. We can say who can and can't be in that right of way. It's not gonna restrict a pedestrian from walking down the sidewalk or whatever.
It's it's another business, it's.
Yep.
They were kind of bandit vendors who didn't have a business license and were just setting up. But I just didn't know what the resolution is. This appears then to be consistent with the legal resolution.
Yes.
And it also goes the other way of restricting that business to say, yeah, you don't maybe like where your brick and mortar is. You wanna go down to the other corner and set up your sidewalk sale. We're saying you cannot do that that way either. So then it gives a. It's fair, where your business is is where you can put your sale.
Right.
That was all I had on this article.
Okay, rolling right along. Trying to get through this fast, guys, I'm sorry. And I hope. Okay, rolling right along. Trying to get through this fast, guys. I'm sorry. And I hope we're not going through it too fast. Like I said, it's a large amendment package, but as you can see, a lot of the changes are very common between the articles. They're very similar. Okay, so this one is our special purpose zoning districts, airport district, college district. We did change the name of the hospital district to healthcare district. Because we felt like that's a better description, because it may not be just a hospital, but it might be supporting services. Even, even like maybe a Ronald McDonald House or something, so healthcare. And then public district. We moved all the transportation policies and practices to Article three. That's where your traffic impact study is. We made no changes to that. All we did was relocate it. No amendments to the language. And that was in Article ten. And what we did in Article ten was just reserve that for future. That's probably where our infill development code will be located eventually. So regulations applicable to the special purpose district, we moved everything from all over the code here. We did create a minimum lot size for the college district and the healthcare district. There wasn't one. Probably a good idea to have one. We did reduce the front side and rear setback in the college district. The reason we did that, those lots are really small. Um, they can't meet today's traditional setbacks, and reducing them is consistent with development that's already there. Like the houses where they're lined up, the garages where they're lined up. So instead of having existing, and then you try to have somebody do this big setback, just consistency. Your historic district is over there too, so some flexibility in that area. We did though, add some setbacks for alleys, which I think is really good. We added a footnote in here in the airport district to make sure that everything is meeting the FAA height restrictions. We added again a footnote that any non-residential structures next to a residential zoning district, we did this specifically for mainly the college district. Um, that if it's next to residential, they need a twenty-foot setback on that non-residential. Again, in here, the density bonus is only permitted in the college district because there's residential allowed. The healthcare district and the public district. Now, when you get to the public district, because I asked these questions myself, I said, why do we have all these dwelling units and stuff in the public district? We're setting ourselves up for future in case the city decides to do an affordable housing project, public housing. And partner with somebody to do a public housing project. Or we want to do, um, low-income deed restricted housing or something. That that's an allowance in a public district. Now, the caveat to that is it's going to require council approval, so they can't just do it. It requires council approval, but we had to show it in there as an allowed use. So when you see the PD, you'll see a footnote. Um, in fact, let me read you the footnote because I had to make sure the footnote read correctly, because I was having a little bit of a struggle with it myself. So it says, um, only permitted if the project is done by or through a public-private partnership with a public agency. And that footnote applies to everything down the public district line. So it's to set us up for if the, if the city someday wants to do a homeless shelter. Kind of like Boise does. Boise has their own affordable housing stuff, homeless shelters. We could do it. Still needs council approval though. We made restaurants permitted in the college district and healthcare. I don't know why restaurants were not permitted in those. Seems kind of weird. We made retail permitted in the airport district. Cause a lot of times you'll see next to the airport, there's a restaurant. We did make primary and secondary schools prohibited in the airport district. They were allowed. We prohibited them. Uh, we did make mini storage facilities prohibited in the airport district. You might ask why? It's because we never know what people are storing in there, and it may not be good next to an airport. Actually, because that's on airport property. They do hangars and stuff, so we made that prohibited. We did make truck stops and SUP in the airport district. We prohibited dormitories in the airport district. Uh, we made duplexes permitted in the healthcare district. Triplexes and fourplexes and SUP in the healthcare district. The reason we did that is we're thinking about things like where people have, like, like I said, a Ronald McDonald House, or they have homes where people stay when their kids are in the hospital or whatever. We want to plan for that kind of stuff. We made, uh, multi-family and SUP with council approval in the public district. Um, single-family and townhomes prohibited in the airport district. Single-family and townhomes permitted in the healthcare district. We made several industrial uses permitted or permitted with an SUP in the airport district, and this was all in consultation with the airport. We made hotels permitted in the airport district. I don't know why they were prohibited. You see hotels next to an airport all the time, but somehow we didn't have them. They do have to have navigation easement agreements, but they're now permitted. Um, and we made RV parks transient permitted in the airport district. I think that's all with nine. Any questions?
When I read the limitations on what can be located in the airport district, I thought it seemed excessively restricting. I thought there could be more of those uses that could be allowed, but if you're, if you have had the airport folks already review that and they decided they should be restricted.
Yeah.
Okay. But the, the, you know, the, the, the noise footprint is a lot less than it used to be, even for jet aircraft. And it's a short duration thing. Unless you, unless you have a use that requires quiet, like residential or, you know, any place like that. Uh, a lot of other places, the noise is intermittent and it comes and goes. So it seemed, it just seemed excessively restrictive, but they're the, they're the responsible ones.
And I think, no, that's a great comment. And I think in the future, pretty far in the future, but probably maybe next year sometime, we might come back and visit that. Cause what happened was the airport did a master plan that significantly reduced the noise overlay zone. But they never went back and actually mapped that out. And so if you read the master plan, you can see where that APO one really isn't as far out as it, is it, is showing. So we've been talking to the airport about maybe going back to the consultants and having them remap that APO one and APO two. So at this time, we didn't want to change a whole lot until we have them relook at it.
So did their master plan include, uh, any aircraft repair facility? Is anyone contemplating repairing jet aircraft at this airport?
I don't know, to be honest with you. Is that not allowed in here?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's permitted. Aircraft repair and service, it's permitted?
Yeah, yeah. So for, for piston engine, not a big deal. For jet engines where they, they test them by doing engine run-ups, that is loud.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So if they were, if they were planning to have, allow jet aircraft repair, then you would want to be concerned about noise.
From my understanding with discussions with the airport manager as well as my semi-limited understanding of jet aircraft, because my father's a jet engine mechanic, that they don't have any right now on the airport, from my understanding, or very, very few, like because of the length of the runway.
Mm-hmm.
And if and when they ever decide to expand the runway, some of that will definitely have to be discussed and regulated more specifically because, agreed, yeah, that, that's a whole different ballgame.
Already, yeah.
And I had somebody express an opinion that they were going to have to permanently shut Lindon it to extend the runway north.
Yeah, yeah. I wrote down to ask Scott about that.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
Other questions on this one?
Not on nine and ten for me.
Yeah, just a slight follow-up question. So for that, are they, is Scott planning on when they gas for the federal grant to build a tower so they can have jets, larger jets come in, that the area will sound very different if we, when, when we build a tower? That it will sound different. So planning for the tower that council's talked about in the past already, because it's federally funded, part of it is. So it would be partially approved. We just need a little bit of money. That that would be a thought. I mean, I, I don't know if he's thought about that. He wasn't hired when the council talked about that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, the talk has been that it would only be used as a diversion airport for aircraft up to seven thirty-seven size from Boise. And that's why they would need the runway extension.
Yeah, and then the tower, they would have to extend the runway and then buy the tower, build the tower, and then they can handle larger jets. But I don't know about the town, the sound difference, but they're larger jets, so I'm not sure what.
We would assume all of the sound studies would have to be done all as part of that in the expansion.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think so.
Surprisingly not bad. But I like the sound of jet engines and I like the smell of jet fuel.
I do like the smell of jet fuel.
You guys are like my husband.
High-octane is right up my alley. Let's go.
Any more questions on nine? Okay. Eleven, overlay zoning districts. So this was already an overlay zoning district. We just kind of reformatted it because we wanted to add more overlays that were in other sections of the code into here. Like for instance, the Studenburg Residential Historic District, moved it over here. Uh, the downtown city center local historic district moved it into here. The Floodplain District into here, Indian Creek Corridor into here, and the downtown city center design requirements into here. So some of this we've already went through as far as like land uses within the airport overlay zone. We did reformat the look and feel of it, because we moved things around as far as sections, because it felt weird when you were reading it. Um, so we re-formatted it. We did remove the allowance for, seemed odd, and Scott kind of agreed that you have noise sensitive uses that are not permitted. But then there was a section in there that said you could have noise sensitive additions and accessory uses. Even if they, even if the main use wasn't permitted, and that seemed odd that why would you allow an addition if you're not even allowing the primary use? So we've removed that allowance. Um, like I said, the only change we made in the APO one was adding some of the hotels, motels, RV parks, churches, personal support services with an navigation agreement. Changes to the airport district, but the APO one is different. It's just for noise sensitive uses. So we deleted a lot of the residential uses that were in there, the schools that shouldn't be in there. And we had no changes to the APO two whatsoever. We created an entertainment overlay district. This was to put the event center overlay in there. This is to recognize the master plan that was adopted through council for the event center. That's where the rodeo and all that stuff is. O'Connor Fieldhouse. Was really just to put it in there, have a reference to the master plan. Wasn't much that happened with that. We created historic overlay districts, so we could move Studenburg over there. We moved the requirements for downtown local historic district over there. And we added a new one that's been on the books forever, but never got put in the code, and that's the North Caldwell Historic District Overlay. It's rec- recognized on the national register for historic places. It's very small. I want to say it's like six, as you can see with the map that's in there, there's like six lots or something. But it's pretty important significance to the city, so, and it's on the register, so we added it in here. We did create some scenic overlay districts. The Indian Creek Corridor one was already existing. We just moved it into here. The key gateway and corridor overlay, that's directly out of the comp plan, where they recommended that certain roads be our key corridors and gateways. Um, and it was always the direction from mayor and council that we create an overlay for key, key gateways and corridors anyways. So eventually what you'll see in here is probably, we'll probably come back later on with some more requirements for site and building design, if you're along those major key gateways and corridors. Right now, it's just kind of a holding place, and it's just copying language out of the comp plan into here. The Boise River Corridor, it mentions it in our code. But it never got codified, so we put it in here. The one thing we did add to here, like Indian Creek requires pathways, if you're located along Indian Creek Corridor. We should have always had that requirement for the Boise River too, to have pathways, and we didn't. So we added a requirement for pathways adjacent to the Boise River Corridor as well. We created a topic for environmentally sensitive overlay. All we did was move the Floodplain language out of Article two into here. We did add some language, but it was already code language that was referenced in some of the engineering chapters for Floodplain. We just kind of copied those over so that it's all listed in one place, and there's a reference to go back to their chapters in their code. Um, we created a special development and urban design overlay district. This is where you'll have an overlay over the downtown. There's an overlay, we call it the River District. This is the area between the River and Centennial and the River and Simplot. And then the neighborhood character, which is basically the TN zone. This one captures another land use chart that in an overlay, you have to, you have to meet the base requirements, but in overlay, you have to meet the base requirements and you have to go to the overlay because it might be more restrictive or have more requirements. The reason we did this for the downtown and the River District and the TN is there's a lot of properties, we've expanded the downtown, there's a lot of properties that are already currently zoned, like industrial in those areas. So we created an overlay so we could try to control some of the heavier industrial uses that are within there, so they don't continue to happen. Now, we recognize there are some industrial users in there like Dairy Gold, so we put some exceptions in that table that they can continue and they can do some additions, but maybe some beautification stuff like screening and landscaping and stuff of their industrial use. But some of the uses that don't currently exist, we're going to prohibit those in the downtown. And in the TN and in that River District area. Cause a lot of that property along the river too is zoned industrial, and a lot of it's not developed. So we're just changing future development patterns. There's a lot to this one. Um, like I said, a lot of it was moved over. The new stuff was mainly the North Caldwell Historic District, the key gateway and corridor, adding pathways to the Boise River, and then the special development and urban design overlay. Those are a little bit new in the code, uh, some language from the downtown, but most of that is just new, trying to restrict some of the land uses if they're in that overlay. Questions?
Table ten eleven oh seven prohibited land uses in overlay zones. The table only shows the prohibited land uses. All similar land use tables also show allowable's. How come this table doesn't show allowable?
Correct. Because like I said, in an overlay, you have to go to the base zoning district first. That tells you what's permitted or specially permitted. Then you go to the overlay, which gives you more restrictions. So what it's saying is, if you're permitted and you can, you can be an SUP here, that's great. But if you go to your overlay and you're, and that's a prohibited, uh, land use, then you can't do it, even though this table says it's okay. Cause you're in that overlay. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you. That's all I have on Article eleven.
Yeah, sorry. The only question I was thinking is that I didn't know if this, I don't think it matters, but the Cougar Pathway, if there are other pathways that you wanted to reference, I think that's something different than the being along the river, but I didn't know if there were other pathways that we would want to be part of code that are something that kind of represents Caldwell. I don't think it's necessary, just a question kind of statement.
Do you know which pathway you're talking about?
Not specifically, but in general, I think all of those are going to have to get captured in the next bigger parks and pathways master plan that we will eventually do.
Okay.
And then that will probably be referenced within our landscaping code, or we'll beef up our pathway code even more to accommodate some of those. Cause to your point, those aren't in some of these like really lon- I guess longitude, really larger area.
Yeah, the Cougar Pathway, I think is just a very.
Right, right. So these overlays are typically for those bigger areas where, you know, again,
Yeah.
the Indian Creek is like a hundred plus feet wide and the entire river, you know, versus just what you're talking about. So that would be in the master plan that we will have to do eventually.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in fact, I'm, we just started writing the RFP, so it's going to be a, I know, right? It's a, I just started it today. It'll be a Caldwell Parks and Recreation Pathways and Open Space Master Plan. And it's going to take into consideration all the existing pathways, the gaps, but also where should those future connections be? At a neighborhood, community, and a. At a neighborhood, community and a regional level. And so I think once we get through that and we'll have GIS with that. Once we have that, I think we'll be, we'll probably come back after that's done. It'll probably take probably eighteen months to do that plan. But we'll be back with probably a more robust like pathways section and open space section that we can bring back that'll address all of that stuff. Um, and it'll probably end up being its own like overlay actually. Yeah, for pathways or it could be a part of the pathway section and maybe there's certain areas that become an overlay.
Gotcha. Yeah. Thanks, Sherri.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Joe. He is going to walk you through. I had the easy stuff. He's going to walk you through the more complex stuff.
So I actually have a question that pertains to the accessory building. Were the ADUs always in the code? I think I heard you say that they were.
They were, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, you're good. Okay, so. Thank you. With the Article twelve. As Robin had said, that was kind of the linchpin for so much of this. Moving the central business district, running all the downtown provisions out of that just opened up so many different things. And so that's what we did. We moved that into Article eight, opened up Article twelve. So we can now put all of those specific use provisions into here. It's a completely new article. Like I said, some other jurisdictions do this already. Um, it's a way to take those permitted uses that we have and add another layer of review, another layer of requirements. In a similar way to an overlay district, but right, a use could be permitted all across the city. You're not going to be able to have an overlay in the same way. So you regulate it through the actual use standards. Um, some of them were existing. There were multiple types of regulations that were either within the downtown section. There was a list of them. Uh, there was animal regulations that had their own article. We moved that into here. The, again, the accessory building and use standards, that was in its own article. We moved that as one of these wireless communication facilities, same way. All of those, there were a number of them that were existing, but scattered. Put them all in one place, again, to try to just have an ease of what we're looking at here. Um, we did make minor amendments to the accessory uses. The main changes to the ADUs, accessory dwelling units, proposing a change of the size from seven hundred and nine hundred from one bedroom to two bedroom. Or no more, more than seventy-five percent of the principal residents, whichever is less. So the point there is we want to allow them to be permanent with single family to, to again, help with some of the affordability issues, aging in place, a mix of housing options in general. But some of those older neighborhoods that would be a great place for an ADU, the main home itself is only nine hundred square feet. Or even smaller in some cases. So we didn't want to allow an ADU that could be larger than the principal residence and now, you know, you're, now that's not the ADU, right? So you, it needs to be accessory to that principal dwelling, hence the seventy-five percent requirement. Or restriction, I guess you could say. In consultation with the state historic preservation, we have proposed to allow them uh, ADUs within the Studenburg District. They actually said that's a great idea. They wish more historic districts across the state did this. Because those areas are typically harder to redevelop and add any kind of density to because of the historic preservation requirements. Allowing an accessory dwelling unit is a way to allow those residents to have an age in place or allow their kid to live on site or whatever the circumstance may be. To your point about they could be rented out, my experience in my professional planning career with those is that's a way for people to accommodate the rise in property taxes is to put an ADU on their property and rent it out. And now that was a way for them to have additional income when they retired. It's not always a bad thing to have rentals is my point there, but it, it is a way for private property rights to be increased in, in many different ways there. So the new ones that we added for the specific use provisions, these replace things that some of them are new uses altogether, some of them existing, but we never included specific use provisions. So it'd be adult businesses, arts, entertainment and recreation facility, automotive uses, contractor shop, you guys can read. Um, some of the bigger ones, drone delivery, uh, very, very new. Obviously across the country, there's very specific regulations with that. I, we are still working through some of the things that need to be very specifically noted with the FAA regulations. Cause there are very specific regulations with that with where they can be, what we can and can't regulate, things like that. Uh, flex space, again, new use in the use table. The concept of having multiple uses within a building already allowed in code, but specifically calling out what flex space is with the warehousing with like a retail office showroom component is more specific. And so we wanted specific use provisions with that because sometimes they can have like a, I guess, I'd say the intent is to have a very nice storefront on one side. And then the backside, there's maybe you have your roll up door that's accessed by an alley or some other internal thing. So we wanted to put specific use provisions in there regarding that. Again, mixed use developments, um, as discussed, that had some very specific requirements we wanted to outline of what does that look like? What are your minimum requirements going to be? As mentioned again, like the small scale, you want, the first floor has to be non-residential, has to be those active uses to activate the sidewalk. Those should be located in those pedestrian oriented places. You, you want to activate the sidewalk. But in the larger scale, the minimum sixty percent commercial, but also how does that transition? How does it look along the perimeter of the site? All those types of things. And then regulate what kinds of dwellings you would want within a horizontal mixed use project. Because largely someone would not do within the highway corridor as an example. Single family and then transition to some triplexes and then have some vertically integrated, you know, multifamily and commercial buildings within the highway corridor zone. They're just going to change the zoning to get their single family, to get their duplexes and whatever else, and that's fine. But overall, the mixed use development of having those mixes of the commercial with the residential. We wanted to regulate and provide instances of where this makes sense and the kinds of dwellings we anticipate in that. We also, again, mobile food unit parks, kind of stole some of that code from, I think Nampa because they have a pretty vibrant, you know, mobile food unit areas that they do permit some of them permanently. Uh, I think took some provisions from Boise because they have their, I can't even remember what that place is called. Green Acres?
Yeah.
I believe it. Yeah, and they're moving, but yes, the, some of those provisions and what to allow, the, the main components of that was requiring honestly, like pedestrian amenities for the customers, saying that, hey, if you're going to have, you know, four or five of these permanent, you can cycle out the individual ones, but the space needs to be appropriate for people to use regularly. Should have benches, have places for shade, have some type of bathroom facility, either onsite or within a certain distance. Um, my wife and I visited Austin, which is apparently considered the food truck capital of the country. They have food truck parks everywhere and so many of them are built like this where there's an anticipation of these food trucks are not temporary. They're permanent structures in a sense. And people know, they're like, oh, I gotta go to Sixth and, and A Street in order to go get this amazing food. Or these hot dogs that were phenomenal, by the way. And different kinds of that and, and just being able to sit down and have six different options within the same little parcel. The point of that was again, really to help activate some of these areas where this could be some of the neighborhood commercial restaurant uses that we want near those intersections and near residents, you know, near um subdivisions that don't currently have that option within walking distance now. We also included modular buildings. Modular buildings, uh, very regulated by the building code. Um, but they're very important to have in our land use chart too, because they can be used as we're seeing more and more with the affordability crisis with housing, they can be used for primary residences, they can be used for ADUs. It can also be used for non-residential uses, either temporary or permanent. So we wanted to create some specific use provisions around those. Schools already had some within, I think they might've had their own article. We moved some of those over, modified them a little bit. Shooting ranges, I believe is a new use overall in the context that we have written it. There, it is in there currently, but we're like no regulations. It's just either permitted somewhere or not. This was specifically made for some of the, the, the public shooting ranges that we have, making sure that just because it's operated by the sheriff's office or whomever. We regulate ourselves and make sure we're being safe and, and appropriate, but also those privately sports ones, if they're going to have it, these are the parameters that you have to have. And then tobacco vape shops, as we've discussed, been contentious use in many, many different capacities, but outlining where they can be, how far away they have to be from certain non-residential types of uses or church schools, those types of things. I guess in the specific use provisions, are there any specific questions that you guys had? Cause there's a lot of new language. But there's also a lot of things just moving from existing code over.
Questions?
Not on this article.
Or comments? Anything you loved, hated? Okay. With the planned unit developments, um, obviously this is an application type that you guys have seen often, right? I mean, frankly, the number of planned unit development requests that we had is a driving factor of why we wanted to update our comp plan and update our codes. If you're getting a request to deviate from your standards with every single application, there's probably something wrong with the standards. You need to have some other avenue to do this. So we wanted to update the PUD code because we're already updating so many of the things. Now the planning and development code was very non-applicable or impossible to even meet. So we moved all of the different provisions for PUDs into this because they're actually scattered with some areas as well. I don't know why we did this throughout the history of our code, but we had many things in many places. Um, we, a main thing, because of our change to the land use schedules, we are deleting the ability to have a prohibited use as with within that thirty percent allowable or thirty percent permitted or non-permitted uses within the PUD code. Now it's just specially permitted. Or, sorry. I think it's just altogether gone. Is that correct? The thirty percent with the permitted, non-permitted?
Yes, we've deleted where it used to say you could have also thirty percent of unpermitted uses. And we've said. No, you can't have unpermitted uses in a PUD. There's a reason why they're not permitted, so they can't have them.
Correct. Thank you. Uh, we did add also a minimum requirement as part of the criteria, right? There's multiple things you had to meet. One of them we added was a minimum requirement for three or more housing types instead of just two. Part of this frankly is because people were doing like one duplex and then all a bunch of other things, right? And technically that met the code, right? Well, now this is three different types and a requirement where they have to be a certain percentage of the project in order to, we're actually getting that housing diversity. Uh, we deleted language regarding the ability to reduce the number of required amenities. Cause obviously if you're forgiving you deviations from things, we don't want you to also give us less amenities. So again, just the logical things that you are going to do through a planned unit development. We added language that if they were going to request code deviations, that they have to provide additional amenities, right? Opposite of what we just deleted. We don't want to give you the opportunity to have that. We want, we want something in return for these deviations. We also added language that requests for deviations cannot include an increase to the max density. So that was in the old comp plan. How you got the, those bumps in density was through the planned unit development. Well, now you have the, one, you have the density bonus program. So that's kind of made that null and void altogether. But also there's no reason through all of the other changes that we're making for to use this planned unit development code as the way to get density bonuses. You're, you're, you're going to have to go to the density bonus thing, which has very specific criteria. That'll get into about what you are going to have to give in order to get that from the city. And then again, as part of the PUD code or, and then the infill that we changed the definition, changed it here to say it has from twenty to five acres. Any specific comments, questions on that?
This one, I, I appreciate to the point. I think this has always with the PUDs that have come before us recently, been a struggle and deviations and I think this just provides a good structure. Um, both for the builder, but also just to ensure there's um, appropriate level continuity in the PUDs is, and um, no, so I, this one, I, I appreciate a lot of them. I particularly appreciate this one.
Sure. Thank you.
I do have a, a question. That large, uh, Brighton development on, it was Midland in twenty twenty-six that we approved. Would it have met this uh, requirement for the mix of housing types? It may be a hard question to answer this, this much after, yeah.
I still remember the subdivision miraculously. I, yes, I think it would.
Yeah, my recollection is that it would have, it would have met what you just described.
They had at least three, I do know that. I can't quite remember if the alley loaded that they proposed, if they probably needed a little bit more of that in order to meet the new PUD, but generally speaking, I, yes, they would have.
Uh, i- in my opinion was it was very well planned.
I, I would agree as far as PUDs go that we've seen. Absolutely. Alright, so now we're going to get into the in detail ones. So this is some more of the ones that we've done. I know it's nine, um, so I understand we will, I'll try to get through it quickly, but also want to be thorough enough for you guys to hear everything you need to hear. So I was just kind of discussing briefly, uh, regarding the driveway space dimensions. We did update that to be ten feet by twenty-five. This matches our proposed garage setback increase. If you notice through in the residential land or dimensional standards, we proposed the garage setback to be twenty-five feet instead of twenty feet. In addition, we also are within the land use table codifying the living area setback. It's important to note that within current code, there's like a, not a footnote, it's actually in like a provision above the table that tells you a bunch of projection stuff, blah, 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 blah. And then like it has just snuck in there. Oh, by the way, you can also reduce or the, the living area can be encroached into the front setback by five feet. Well, all the front setbacks were twenty feet, so that just means the living area setback could be fifteen. But it was never listed in the table, so we wanted to put that in the table to make it very clear that you have a living area setback and you have your garage setback. So the living area is proposed at fifteen feet for most of them. I think our three, it's proposed at ten. Really to anticipate some of those higher density residential uses that they probably don't even have a garage anyways. And so you'll have like your sidewalk and ten feet of landscaping and then the fourplex or apartment building or something.
Sorry, what, what section are we on now?
Parking would be ten oh two oh five, but my discussion with the dimensional standards would be Article five with the residential land use table. Sorry, my brain's all over the place with this stuff. The point of that was saying that the driveway dimension section of ten oh two oh five is that changed the twenty-five feet is mirroring the change of the garage setback to twenty-five feet. And that is because I'm sure you guys have lived it. I know I do in my neighborhood. So many people, thank you Idaho, have all these big trucks and they don't pull them all the way up, or maybe they do, but the house was built at that twenty foot setback. And I hit my shin on the hitch and I want to burn the house down. Cause it just, in general, one, there's ADA things that that is, that's illegal technically. They're not, you're not supposed to block the sidewalk. So it's to accommodate some of that, not just the big trucks, but in general, so a- any vehicle, you don't have to pull all the way to your garage door. It just helps you have a little more space in your front and to help minimize those overhangs of the vehicles on the public sidewalk. That's the main, main thing. We also updated the EV parking. So current had, um, it was only for non-residential. And it was only, it, we had to hit a hundred spaces in order to require it. Well, the way that everything has been going, there's a, obviously a huge push in general for the EV spaces. There's a lot more electric vehicles on the road. We wanted to modify that to say, once you go over twenty-five spaces for multifamily and non-residential that you have to do five percent and just make it a simple five percent. And that's in addition to, so that was one of the comments from Brighton. If you guys saw their uh, table that they were like, well, what is the math? You say it's like, has to be five percent up, but what does that really mean? It's like fair, fair point. So we did change that to say, in that example, it was a hundred spaces. So you have to do five. Well, and the total would be one hundred and five. So it's in addition to the minimum off-street requirement. Um, we also are saying at the request of fire for the, obviously the combustibility of lithium batteries is very different than something else, some other car fire. That they want, uh, the spaces located at minimum fifty feet where feasible. From any combustible structure essentially. So that's something that they'll have to review when we get these site plans and things like that. But we wanted to include that as a standard just to make sure that applicants understand, you can't just put that right up against the front of the building. You're going to have to put that one row back just to make sure that we don't have some of those life safety issues. We also cleaned up the overall table that listed the number of required off-street spaces. If you guys have looked at that, it's really long. And it matches the current land use schedule that has like all these different categories, but then like some of them probably need to go somewhere else and it's very complicated. As a planner, looking at that, when I first started here, I was like, what the heck's going on? I don't even know what. And half of the uses that are in the land use schedule weren't even in the table. So then you're like, well, what is it? What's the requirement? So we wanted to propose cleaning that up. Part of that was making a a general requirement for all commercial or basically non-residential to be one per five hundred across the board, one space per five hundred feet of gross floor area. And then if it's an industrial manufacturing, a non-commercial one, then it's one per two thousand. Now those are based off of frankly, research into what the parking. Now those are based off of frankly, research into what the parking requirements should be. Market will likely require more in some cases. Um, other jurisdictions have very similar requirements for industrial and just general commercial of the one per five hundred or one per two thousand. My experience, the one per five hundred is enough for some uses, not enough for others. But the businesses turn around and do the one per two fifty or something because they're like, oh, well, my client wants more parking. So we're just gonna have more and that's fine. We're okay with that, but just you need to hit this minimum. And again, part of that is just to keep it very basic, general. But there are specific uses in there that are listed still. And that's because some of the uses, the one per five hundred doesn't make sense. Like we talked about with the car wash, that's a difficult one because the space of the building is relative. I mean, and what are they like three thousand square feet, I think, give or take from what I remember. But there's two employees. So how many parking spaces do you really need? Well, per the code, it would be six. Well, that may not be necessary if only have three people working or two people working. Uses like that, that are just odd, that don't fit that box of the standard brick and mortar. Um, a bigger update is the residential. So again, still keeping the single family at two per dwelling, but updating the multifamily to be based off of the bedroom count. This is again, something that multiple jurisdictions do, and this is requiring more parking. I've done the math on multiple projects. This will require approximately, depending on the bedroom count, because that's what makes it very about twenty percent more parking than what our current is, give or take. Some of them, I think the lowest was like, I think fourteen percent more, but the highest on a project was like thirty-three percent more parking. So I did like six different projects. It was averaging twenty, twenty-two percent. Um, specifically requiring one for a studio, one and a half spaces for every one and two bedroom, two spaces for every three bedroom, plus guest parking at ten percent essentially. So one for every ten units, not one for every ten spaces, but one for every ten units. So ten percent of your unit count, you have to have that additional. So any of these apartments that, uh, these developments have two hundred and fifty units, they're gonna have twenty-five additional guest parking spaces in addition to the per unit. So again, that's where you get, as you scale these up, you do get some of that guest parking that we've been very concerned with that we had not been able to get before. Okay, regarding the parking, is there any specific other ones you guys had? I know we talked a little bit while we were in there, but anything that I pinged for you guys while we were talking now?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, the, for the single family and two-family dwellings, we crossed out the three per dwelling unit max number of parking spaces. Why was that removed or you just want it to?
Sure. No, great question. So one, as soon as you put a two-car garage in a driveway, you were already over the three max technically because you do count the garages. It was something that we were consistently overlooking in code. And if it's something that you're consistently pretending doesn't exist, surprise shouldn't be there. So we're just trying to make really ourselves more compliant with ourselves and, and just make those reviews easier. Um, having a max parking on single families is very rare period in general. So that, that's just something we just make it simple, take it out. If we're gonna ignore it, we shouldn't have it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. So regarding the landscaping, buffering and screening, again, that was move originally in article seven, moved it all into article two to be part of applicable to all zoning jurisdictions. It is, you have to landscape everywhere, period, doesn't matter. Now we added a provision, I apologize for the font, I was trying to cram as much in for you guys, but the, uh, we added provision within the applicability section of where this is triggered. So when is it applicable? We added a new one that's worthy of note that if you have an addition that exceeds twenty-five percent of the existing structure or it's one thousand square feet, whichever is less, then you're gonna have to do that. This is for some of the, there's areas of the city where people have made repeated additions and/or done a lot of work to their home or, or even a business that doesn't have sidewalk. They don't have landscaping along the front edge. They don't have some of these things that code is requiring, but the old, the current applicability standards, we wouldn't be able to require that because they didn't do a change of use. They aren't doing new construction, so then we couldn't require the street buffer. We couldn't require this other land use buffer or whatever it may be because they weren't meeting that applicability. So this is a way that we tried to add that in there to catch those and get some of those improvements that we want, especially regarding land use buffers and the street buffers. Um, we also added a provision that smaller projects, less than two acres, do not have to have a landscape architect stamp the plans and make the plans. And that is to honestly help with some of the costs. Some of these smaller projects, the architect that they're using for the new building, they're good enough to, in a professional setting, but also with their drafting to put in the type of plants, the ground cover and things like that for the smaller project. The reason why we want it for the bigger projects is now we're talking much larger scale irrigation plans. We're talking a little bit bigger infrastructure overall, we have a lot more trees. So those you want a little bit more of that security, that this is being constructed to the standards and, and, drawn to the standards that you would want for the profession. But the smaller projects, the mom and pops that are just trying to redo their parking lot or they bought a old building that didn't have the street buffer. It's only an acre. We don't want to ding them with additional requirements because those paying some, a landscape architect to do those can be rather expensive just because of the certification. We also modified the minimum planting requirements. Um, this is important because of a general thought to try to reduce our water, right? Just because we don't have a water problem now, doesn't mean we're not going to in the future in general. Coming from Southern California, live this in many different capacities. So in general, we're just trying to stave off that, that issue. So it's better to be proactive than reactive when it comes to this. Part of that is requiring seventy-five percent of the trees and shrubs to be low or moderate water usage. The way that we do that is because we are requiring that the trees be selected from the Treasure Valley Tree Selection Guide. It's already referenced in the code, but we wanted to, we made it very specific that you have to use that to pick your trees. And those have really good guides about the water usage on there. So it makes it really simple for applicants, but also staff when we get the plans to review that. Also requiring ground cover to be minimum twenty percent grass, but a maximum of fifty percent. Right now, the minimum is seventy percent grass. Obviously takes a lot more water when it's seventy percent grass versus twenty percent grass. And there's a lot of studies that show half of the water, I don't know if it's half, but generally a lot of water usage is wasted on these larger grassy areas because they just overspray it. And you're watering the sidewalk half the time. And obviously that doesn't do anything except just waste water, create maintenance issues, et cetera, et cetera. So this helps mitigate some of that, that you just don't have these huge swathes of grass that you're gonna overspray anyways. Another one recently, working with a landscape architect, uh, changing the size of the shrubs at planting to be based on the spread rather than the, the pot size. So right now it says a two gallon pot minimum. We've been running into a lot of issues where one, I don't know how big the pot was because I'm looking at this now when it's in the ground, but it's this little weed, this little stick. And they're like, well, that was three gallon pot. And I've had the landscape architects tell me like, oh yeah, nurseries do this all the time. But they'll put the smaller pot or smaller plant in a bigger pot to meet these requirements. But then at planting, you get nothing. And so this helps us that saying at planting, when we go out and do your landscape inspection, I already thought about a couple of different things I can make that are gonna be, uh, ten inches wide is what we've said that I'm gonna put it over your plant and if it hits it, then we're good. If it doesn't, if it just falls to the ground, well, then you're, that's not the right plant. That's not the right age, whatever it may be. And that's to help ensure that when these things are actually planted on the front end, we're getting adequate landscaping. We're not getting just little dingy weeds that we can't use. Uh, we're also requiring a variation of shrub density depending on the type of landscaping. So like a land use buffer, we're gonna requiring more shrubs versus the street buffer, which has other types of ground cover in there, et cetera. Also updated minimum qualified open space for subdivisions. We reduced the number of categories and simplified the table. I think I've discussed that with you guys before, uh, based on the average lot size. There's right now, there's like five categories, we're breaking that down to essentially three. Plus, if you have an average lot size, that's an acre, then you don't really have a minimum. You just have to have like one grassy area that's a certain size. That's because the concept of if you have acre lots, you, you're probably not gonna go to a shared space. Many times you're gonna be on your own property or you'll go to a public, larger facility to use that. And that's something that every jurisdiction pretty much does. Um, proposing a tree requirement for the open space. We currently don't have that, so we're requiring one tree for every five thousand square feet of open space. So those larger open spaces within the subdivisions, yes, developers usually do put in a tree or two or whatever it may be. Sometimes they're way over treed. We're just requiring a minimum for those projects that propose none. And we do want some shade in that because, so just because you have a grassy area, doesn't mean everybody's always gonna use it to play soccer. You may want to just sit and you should have a place to have some shade. Um, requiring the main open space area to be constructed within the first two phases of the development. That's a big one. Obviously we know sometimes phasing gets a little wonky, but also sometimes developers push this out. They do a hundred and fifty homes and have these little tiny pocket parks that are five thousand square feet. Then all the residents are like, dude, I've been, I've been living here for four years and we're on phase six, but the clubhouse and main open space is still not constructed. That's what this is requiring is saying like, that's not gonna happen. We want this stuff closer to the front end. We understand may not phase one, maybe not. Phase two, you should have adequate number of homes to help accommodate and pay for these things. Um, increasing the minimum qualified open space area for the P U Ds from ten percent to fifteen percent. So current code, if your average lot size was, I believe, under eight thousand or six thousand or whatever it was, you have to have ten percent open space. But then the P U Ds was also ten percent. It's like, well, obviously with the P U D, you're getting things from the city. Why would you have the same open space requirement? So we increased that to fifteen percent because again, we, we want more in return to give you deviations to code standards. Now we also updated what areas are qualifying. So overall with those updates that I mentioned, it's gonna probably require a little bit more open space overall. So part of that to help alleviate some of the potential cost burden is allowing areas that are already going to be required to count. So the main ones would be the street buffers and then stormwater facilities. So we would say fifty percent of the street buffers along arterials and collectors, only fifty percent can count now. And then also the stormwater facilities. So that's a huge one from the developers across the board that I've, I've heard my home builders, whoever it may be of why doesn't this count? It's just flat grass. I can't put trees in it, I can't put shrubs in it, but you're not gonna let me count it. Nobody will ever know that there's a seepage bed under there. It's like, fair point. It's used as a grassy area, that's fine. The ones that can't count still are the sloped ones that have a bunch of gravel and rock in the bottom. That's not gonna count. But if it's subterranean, under grass, you're good to go. You can count that area now. It also makes it easier for staff when we're calculating these things because code language right now is very specific. And so you have to do these weird polygons when you're counting things because the developers never do it right. And it's just a pain. So this will help clear that up for us. We also simplified the street buffer table and increased the minimum width for collectors, arterials and along the highway interstate. So again, right now it's like local, uh, collector, major collector, minor arterial, arterial and then the interstate. Well, this just says collectors, arterials, interstate, we're done. I'm not messing with minor versus major, especially because a minor arterial in the future is probably gonna be a major arterial. Why are we gonna give you a five-foot reduction in the buffer on the front end? So it would, it goes from the local street and all that is still ten feet. Not applicable for like internal to your subdivision, obviously. But if you have a local street behind your house, your subdivision, the developer should have put a minimum ten-foot wide street buffer there to help separate those homes from the public right away. So they're not double-fronted lots. Collectors are going from fifteen feet to twenty feet. Arterials across the board will all be twenty-five feet. And then the highway twenty twenty-six, highway fifty-five, and the interstate going from thirty feet to thirty-five feet. We added the requirement for additional landscaping within some of the key corridors. Some of those are the ones outlined that, uh, Robin has with an overlay. But in general, there will be probably broader ones as we get more developed in that overlay. But it would be instead of just landscape beds and grass and trees, it would also require boulders, dry creeks, undulating firms, decorative walls, some other elements that are in there, even little areas. They're cut out for like a little park benches or whatever to have people have the opportunity to sit, those types of things in order to just help beautify some of those corridors. Also overhauled the land use buffer section. So similar to the parking table, the land use buffer section had this really hard to read list. It wasn't even a table really, but a list that had class one through five and a few uses, some that make sense, some that you're like, why is this use not in there versus others? So we just wanted to simplify that, take away the table because it was so confusing and go to something a little more standardized. So the standard ones proposed are a twenty-foot minimum land use buffer for all commercial uses that are adjacent to residential, period. Doesn't matter what the residential use is or what technically the commercial use is. This is very easy to implement with new, uh, development, older development, we're gonna, it's gonna be a little more nuanced. We have to figure that out, but it at least, this gives us a very good base. And then for industrial adjacent to any residential, it'd be thirty-foot minimum. And that'd be the buffer. So again, the code says you have to have forty-foot setback, but thirty feet of that is gonna have to be a buffer. So that's gonna help minimize some of the noxious uses of that. If it's industrial next to commercial, because commercial is still less intense than industrial, you have to do a twenty-foot buffer. And then within the special purpose zones, if they're adjacent to any residential, you have to have the ten-foot land use buffer there too. Um, within the urban core, it's gonna be based off of the type of use. Urban core, again, you, a mix of uses can happen. So if you have a residential use, you're not gonna have to have a buffer. But if you have a commercial use next to a residential, you, you still need some type of buffer. So that's still gonna be applicable. Just because it's in the downtown, doesn't mean you're, um, I forgot the word, I'm like, doesn't mean you get out of it immediately. There are no buffer requirements for residential uses except for multifamily. And I'll get into that in probably the next section there. Pathways, we did rename them from micro, major and public to neighborhood, community and regional respectively in order to match much more commonly used language within comp plans, within master plans, within all those things. So it's a little bit anticipation of, of the new master plan, but also understanding that the neighborhood is for your neighborhood. That's those smaller five-foot pathways. The community ones, probably a bigger pathway through the community, around the community. And then regional, obviously regional connectivity, that's your ten-foot paths, pathways that we want to have more of. We also clarified the tree requirements along pathways. There's places where it says trees, but it doesn't say how many. So we just clarified that. We created perimeter parking lot and building facade landscaping requirements. The parking lot landscaping that we have now is just for the planter islands, doesn't have anything about the perimeter. So that's where you get some of these commercial uses, especially or even industrial where you have the asphalt right at the property line. And then curb stops, there's nothing else required. And that's unfortunate because sometimes the next use over might not be as nice about it. So, or might be less intense and you need some type of buffer. So we required that. The building facade landscaping is when it's adjacent to a roadway or facing a roadway. You need to have some type of landscaping along the base of the building, just three feet wide, some shrubs, a few trees, just to beautify that streetscape. Again, you have your street buffer, but then also something maybe more pedestrian scale along the building facade. Again, that's very planning oriented. Um, we also created water wise landscaping. There's one random paragraph in the code now that talks about dry landscaping. This section take, took that and expanded upon it to offer the opportunity for more water wise usage. So remove the grass requirement, but require multiple types of rock. Still have to do your trees, but also require some boulders. So again, for more of the industrial uses adjacent to other industrial uses, you, if you have your parking lot landscape buffer, your perimeter, probably not gonna want grass. Understood? Fine. Well, then give us some decorative rock, give us some boulders. You still need to have the trees so that you don't have as much heat gain along the parking. But you still have a reduced requirement for the water. Part of that is also allowing native grasses to be used instead of the grass that may not require watering at all, but still look good. Okay. So that was it for landscaping and buffering. Obviously that section had a lot of changes, a lot of strike through underlying, a lot of additions, a lot of review. So if you guys have any comments or questions, feel free. No? Okay. We'll keep chugging along. Multifamily, um, I believe I presented this to you guys twice now at least. Um, not many changes since before, but I'll, I'll skim through some of them. So entire article fourteen is being updated. Right now it's just internal circulation, changing that to include minimum site design, minimum building, minimum building, and then a buffer section. The buffer setback section is exactly what's on the screen right now. So A through E, that's exactly what has been proposed. It is the latest changes based upon, uh, proposing projects to council, getting council feedback, getting feedback from home builders, getting feedback from residents, things like that. The main takeaway is that they're gonna have a perimeter setback of at least fifteen feet, period. Doesn't matter what they're adjacent to, they have to have a setback of fifteen feet. If it is. Adjacent to single family, the buffer needs to be twenty-five feet instead of the fifteen. Now the caveats to that are if you're gonna do multifamily, that's single story. If you guys remember a couple of projects that have come before you like that where. It's one parcel and they have two hundred units, but they are like little individual tiny cottages. But it's still multifamily because it's so many units on a property. Those would be exempt from the twenty-five foot buffer. They still have to do the fifteen though, just in general. And then also for multifamily buffering within the city center and central business, that's a whole different ballgame down here. So the same setback and buffer requirements just cannot be applicable. So that's the other exception. Um, in addition to the perimeter buffer, if a new multifamily building is across the street from a single family subdivision. That fifteen foot buffer is also required. So that would be if you have. Multifamily along a local street and then on the other side of the local street is residential. They probably didn't have any buffer. So you'll have like corner lots, right? And then the landscape, street buffer requirement only says ten feet. So this is saying, no, 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 it's gonna be fifteen and it's gonna have to meet the buffer requirements in this code. So it's a little denser buffering than what the buffering is in the landscape code. And the point of that is to help again, give some separation and privacy to the existing single family. Understood? This is a good example. Of what that buffer should be. This is code compliant. Buffer distance based upon when this was approved. I don't know that this would necessarily meet the setback requirements now, but. For the sake of what it is, at least let's talk landscaping. Under the proposed code, it would likely look something more like this. Now, yes. Drawing it, you have a little bit more mature trees here. It looks nicer understood, but. More so pay attention to the buffer at the pedestrian level, the additional shrubs, the rocks. You can't tell, but there's actually like little berms there too. So it helps create, bring that vegetation up a little bit. And the little patio that they have on the front or back door, whatever way you wanna orient yourself there. It's a little bit more private for both. The multifamily resident, but also the people across the street. So just side by side, looking at the existing frankly dreary type landscaping. And then what our new code would require, especially the number of trees too is more. Overall, there is some additional requirements. So requiring. Ten percent qualified open space overall, period. Doesn't matter. You're gonna do ten percent minimum based on your gross acreage of the property. But then when the project becomes over five acres, you're gonna have to do ten percent plus a per unit. So then again, this scales with the project size and the unit size and all those things. So we're getting more of that open space for those bigger projects. Cause frankly, ten percent of a project at fifty acres. Doesn't feel the same way of ten percent of a project at five acres. And so we just wanted to make sure we're scaling that up when you have four hundred units. Versus forty units and that the open space is appropriate. Um, and then as Robin had mentioned, requiring a minimum of sixty square foot of private open space per unit. Sixty square foot is somewhat arbitrary, but not originally it was eighty. I think we threw out seventy at one point, thought about a hundred and twenty. Some of it is arbitrary again, but this is based off of feedback from, I believe you guys are council as well as. Builders who do these things and have told us what is easier and what's not easier and what's more cost effective and what's not for the area. I have heard that they will probably end up doing a little bit more than sixty square foot, but that's why this is a minimum. And again, this would be applicable to like the Tillian where you'd have to have some type of little deck outside. Again, sixty square feet, easy, six foot deep or extension off that building and ten foot wide. At least you could walk out there and stand and look at the creek rather than try to pin your head against the window and look at it unless you're on this side. So it's, it's just a way to help give a little bit of private open space to each unit. Um, projects that are five acres or more or fifty units or more, they have to have one of the part of their open space. They have to have a minimum ten thousand square foot grassy area. So. This is to help alleviate some of those issues where you can count some of your buffers, you can count all of these things. If you have a larger development, some of that might hit. Your open space already, but then you've never really had like a central open space area. This is to help just require that period. To say you're gonna have to have that. Yes.
Is that related to section ten fourteen oh one, sub paragraph four E? Which is the minimum open space requirement based on the living area per unit? So you just quoted ten thousand square feet and, and I had a question on, on the open space requirement based on living area per unit.
Mm-hmm.
S- uh, uh, I, I thought needed additional description. I didn't understand how that worked. Whether it was all the, that number times the number of living area. And then that is one big common area. Is that the same as this ten thousand square foot?
Oh, okay. I believe I understand your question. Yes and no. This ten thousand square foot has to be one of the open space areas, period. What the total. Amount is that you would be required to do. If you get to the per unit, I believe like the, the most common one is probably gonna be the two hundred and fifty. Square foot, just because of the range of the, the unit size. So it's saying if you have a hundred units. And all of them are seven hundred square feet, then you would have seven hundred. Or sorry, a hundred times the two hundred and fifty and that is the additional open space.
On top of.
On top of the ten, not just the ten thousand, on top of the ten percent gross. But then overall, no matter how you lay that out, whatever's qualified or whatever, you need to have at least one open space area that's ten thousand square feet. An area and that's to help. There's a lot of multifamily projects. I'm sure if you drove around, they don't have a big enough grassy area for kids to play. There's just too many remnant areas. And so this is to help alleviate that.
This is not in addition to.
No.
Ten, that there just has to be a.
Within the ten percent.
Whatever the calculation is, one, there has to be one section that's at least ten thousand.
Yes. It's not in addition to, it's just.
Oh, so this could count towards that.
Correct. Yes, it could count towards that absolutely. It's just requiring a little bit more specificity of how we want that open space to look. Next one, uh, providing a broader list of example amenities. So right now there's nothing in there. The only amenity list that we have is like in the PUD code. So this provides a much broader list of what we anticipate within a multifamily development of different categories and, and different amenities that we'd like to see. Um, and then requiring minimum architectural design standards. So if you guys can see the numbers, the little white numbers. Little white circles with black numbers. We'll just try to go through that real quick. So like this is from our code. First one being in requiring an accent color and or material along the facade. And then the second one. Be down towards the bottom, number two there, windows providing relief and detail. Variation of the facade through the use of, you know, trim and architecture. Again, these are all architectural things to help. Beautify the buildings because frankly, we have some questionably looking multifamily structures in the city. Um, requiring a minimum of three colors along the facade. Uh, providing variations in the roof profile. So instead of just having. Even just one pitched roof, you could have dormers, you could have some sections pop up a foot or two, whatever, maybe just to add. Some visual interest and you're not seeing a string of the same exact roof. Um, at least one type of wall modulation. Um, a landscape buffer that includes the undulating berm. Again, help just create a little bit of privacy, a little bit of visual interest, pedestrian scale for those. Um, building facade should be varied with horizontal and vertical elements. You could, you could still do. Lap siding, but have. You know, level one doing vertical, level two doing horizontal, whatever, break it up. Again, you don't have little monopoly houses that just look the exact same everywhere. And the last one, eight would just be lighting. Has to be directed towards the ground. And not up. So no uplighting. This is not necessarily dark sky ordinance, but it's in that same vein. Of having lighting down. We don't want it to be shining across property lines, interrupting people, period, or even an adjacent unit. Okay. There's one more section. So the multifamily, you guys have any more comments, questions? Okay. So in the density bonus program, uh, this is brand new, completely new section, ten oh three eighteen, one of the ones, I believe that's actually new, new. That was never even in there before, um, a new subsection, but. We're implementing it or proposing it because of the recommendations and the, what's outlined in the comprehensive plan, the new comp plan. Um, again, not permitted in the R one zone regardless of the place type, regardless of the future land use designation. Um, we created minimum criteria, but also specific requirements with a proposed point system. So. I guess some of the minimum criteria would be deed restricted units, having some agent place units, housing diversity. Including new homes built with ADUs rather than having ADUs be added to single family homes that have been there for twenty years. Somebody coming in and doing a subdivision and proposing new homes with an ADU already on the property or part of the home. However, that would work. Um, and again, a big one dedication of land or construction of major public facilities. So not necessarily saying like, um. You know, like a sewer trunk line. That's something that engineering is probably gonna require anyways. And they need sewers, so they're gonna have to do it, but more of the, you know, police, fire stations, the public park, community center. An amphitheater, a library, whatever that may be, those types of things that are for the public, but within a or a part of a private development. Um, the point system broke down into five categories and, and. From a half a point and then one, two, three and four points. One point would be twenty-five percent of the buffer or the density bonus, sorry. Two points would be fifty percent, et cetera. You guys get that. The point of that is so that. Like with the PUD, right? You meet your criteria and you would get the full density bonus. You could go all the way up to the max. This is a way to prevent that from happening and saying like, unless you do something really, really big. Which is, there's only a few of those four point ones that give you the hundred percent of the density bonus. Unless you do something really, really big. That's very impactful to the community and your project, you're not gonna get the full density bonus that's listed. So. Obviously there'd be some math involved with all of this and discretion frankly, but that discretion is in there so that Director Collins. That staff, that the council gets to make that determination of like, I don't believe that that should count. Or hey, you're proposing six different things. Three of them aren't really in the list, but we feel like it matches the intent of this. You can get another point towards your density bonus, whatever it may be. There, there has to be some nuance just because. You can't write code that's gonna fit every situation. But again, the main purpose is to. Frankly, prevent people from getting the outright full density bonus just because you do one thing.
Re- remind me on this, this was council approved, correct?
The comp plan was, which discusses the density bonus program. This is part of the code amendments. So.
Correct. I, um, what specifically if somebody were to get, um. The density, to get points to earn to, that's done by council?
It'd be part of some whatever application.
So chair and commissioners, that would be part of what you as commissioners or the council will need to decide as part of these amendments.
Yeah.
You'll need to decide if, do you like the criteria? And are you okay with staff scoring them as they come in? Or do you like the criteria, but you still want them to request an SUP or something? To come before the commissioner council? So that you all can determine if you agree with the scoring or not. So those are two questions. If you like what's in the criteria and then how do you want the process to work?
Right. In these code amendments, we have not proposed. Something specific to say to get density bonus, you have to do a PUD or to get the density bonus, you have to do a council level SUP. We have not proposed that because that's a major discussion point of how would you guys want that process to be or not?
Wh- when would be the appropriate time to caucus to decide on a, a going forward plan?
I mean, I think that's part of this discussion.
Yes.
Provide input to staff. They're gonna do the same with council and then, then they're gonna, I'm presuming will come back with. Something that they wrote, will present to us to.
Yeah, that would actually be for recommendation. Correct. Yeah. And you're more than welcome. If you can have the discussion now, but if you don't know. You're more than welcome to do your own research, email it to us, give us that feedback. That's, that's why this is a workshop. It's a little bit more informal in that way. But if you wanna have that discussion, that's why staff is here to answer the main question. I have seen it while we've done this density bonus, some places require an application to get it, some places don't. It just depends on the level of comfort of the, the bodies, the boards, the commissions or council.
My, I guess my, my initial reaction to this is, um. I, I, I would like to see it before hearing body personally, um, because of how wide the range is. I know that's a conversation that's come up. About this when we, we saw the comp plan of, um, because the number, these, the, the potential, um. Numbers can add up pretty quickly potentially. Um, and I just think it's important. As a community member, just that there, there's that additional process through hearing body, this body through council. Um, to just to have those additional set of eyes for making sure, um. Yeah, just that there's additional sets of eyes and, and thoughts in that process. That's kind of my hot take.
I, I, I generally agree, agree with what you're saying. There, there are so many variables involved in the definition of. The density bonus criteria that if some one variable changes partway through the process, for example. If they're depending on a federal grant and that grant money goes away, they may not be able to develop it. For the intent of the density bonus program, which is affordable or age in place, that, that kind of thing. And, and therefore it would invalidate the entire development. So I, I, I agree that it requires review beforehand. Okay. So I, I think that means, uh, director, that we would follow, uh, perhaps the SUP?
Yeah, something, some mechanism to, to bring it before a body. Could it be Sharon Larson?
Yeah, I, I would generally the same consensus that should probably come before us. I would probably say it should not go before the hearing examiner. Cause I think you need a couple of people's opinions and because of the sheer magnitude of forty dwelling units. Um, if it was the mayor, that's someone different who was voted, but the hearing examiner seems like too much of a weighted decision for that person. So I feel like at least us, there's three to five, the council, there's six and a mayor. Um, I feel like that's more, more appropriate.
An SUP then, it's an SUP that's heard by the commission.
Commission or council, but what, not, not one person, not, cause it would just, it's too much burden for that.
Sure.
Hope, I don't think they'll get death threats, but it just wouldn't be, it's a lot, these decisions, all of us spend a lot of time reading and weighing them out.
Yeah.
And I don't know, maybe he or she had a bad day and they're just like, just let it fly. So I, I think it would be best for. Multiple people to make the decision. Okay.
Uh, in general, like in looking at this, I know in talking about the density points, just hearing people, it just sounds like we're. What I, what I wanna make clear is not, it's not giving away additional opportunities for more units and for developers. Like if you look at this, you were really asking. The bars relatively high for these developers and you know, in doing this, if they're able to dedicate land and construct a park. For the city, like that's a, that's a benefit to our community. So, um, I, I think it's important to highlight that. These aren't just freebies that we're offering up to developers. They're actually, if they're, if they want to do. Great things for our community in these ways, um, that's awesome. And you know, and then there's points available, but I, I can't. Yeah, it's good. It's a high bar. That's what I'm trying to say. But it's almost ten o'clock. So I'm less articulate right now than I was earlier.
I understand. Well, that's.
That's your whole presentation?
That's the end of the presentation.
Final comments?
Uh, you still gonna do something on chapter eleven?
Didn't, not me, no.
Do you wanna just kind of talk about, I guess I can open it up. I can talk about it. Um.
Oh, chapter eleven. You said chapter eleven. I apologize. They said article eleven. I was like, yeah, no, Robin did that already.
It's chapter eleven.
Chapter eleven. Um, there were some changes in there. A lot of them, as you can see, very minor. This honestly cleanup from some of the changes that we made in the first amendment package to just make sure that we caught things like one of them being. Um, I think it was the processing of the final plot.
Condominiums.
And also condominiums and when that is going to be, when you are allowed to submit for that and when you're not. There's a lot of cleanup items for the chapter, uh, one of them being one specifically requested by engineering was for common drives. Making sure that they're, I think they're increasing. Or they're changing the minimum width to make sure it matches what we want. And then also making it very clear that it has to be constructed appropriately to engineering standards, that type of a thing. I can't think of anything else that was major within chapter eleven.
Let's see.
Do you have any specific questions, question, Bootch?
I, I, I do. I think they're, I think they're relative. I, I, I do. I think they're, I think they're relatively minor.
Okay.
But, but here comes one nerdy worded question. Does deletion of section four paragraph F two mean that plat validity is governed by section three? Paragraph B two, two years instead of thirty-six months, or is it governed by section five, paragraph B?
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So we had that section under final plat recording and it kind of conflicted.
It did, yeah. The thirty-six month thing didn't match.
Right, it didn't match. And so it ends up being about the same.
Right.
But it was just the wording of how it was done. So yes, the thirty-six month one would go away and what it would end up being is, um, that you have twenty-four months, um, let's see, you have to submit your final plat within twenty-four months of the preliminary plat, and then your final plats must be recorded for the first, for a single phase or for the first phase within twenty-four months of city council approval of the final plat. So in reality, that could give you, um, four years.
Total, for the first phase.
Yeah, to do that.
And that's where the thirty-six month was, when we made the other changes, thirty-six month was like, wait, we should have struck that because it was more restrictive than what we already written.
And what that does is it aligns with what we're hearing from the developers, because they're really saying that by the time you go through the entitlements for a prelim- preliminary plat, you get your cons, your cons, because they have to do their construction drawings with the final plat. So they're like, it takes us a good two years to get the construction drawings and the final plat ready. And then once they do that and they get the final plat approved, the city requires them to build a certain amount of the infrastructure before they can record it, and it takes them a good eighteen months to twenty-four months. So they, they really need four years to do that.
Yeah, I, I don't object to that. I just wanted to see consistency
Yeah.
in, in, in what's in the code.
Correct.
Um, also in section six, paragraph A two, it says that the number of buildable lots can increase by ten percent, but the number of dwelling units wouldn't increase. I don't understand how that can be.
So that's the, uh, that's existing code? That is not something that we changed? That is saying that in, in no case can you increase your density, period. So whatever, if they're approved for a hundred and fifty lots that, or sorry, a hundred and fifty dwelling units, that's what they get, a hundred and fifty dwelling units. The caveat to that would be if some of those dwelling units were a triplex. But now they're wanting to come back and make those single family attached and increase the number of lots, but not the number of dwelling units. Then that would be permitted as long as they're within that ten percent. So that's really the only time that that's applicable.
That's kind of an edge case, which just sounds unlikely.
Yeah, very unlikely. But I think we had the one case recently that somebody asked at administrative level. They took advantage of this because they're like, hey, when we proposed this, these were triplexes or duplexes or whatever it was. And then they're like, the market right now, whatever, they're like, we wanna make these single family attached. And we're like, well, as long as you don't go over the ten percent and you don't increase the total number of units, then you're fine.
Right. Okay, uh, my last question. In section seven, paragraph fourteen point one, there was a change from a twenty-six foot wide common driveway to twenty-four foot wide. Did that change originate from the fire department?
It originated from the engineering department in consultation with the fire department. So yeah, that twenty-six feet is only required by the fire department if they're adjacent to a structure that's over thirty foot to the eve. And typically, common drives are not used in those cases for that type of a structure. It'd be for a single family where they have the common drives. And the twenty-four foot is what accommodates really, if it was a fire access, that's only need twenty is what they require. So yes, it, it complies with the fire stuff too.
However, that's why we added the additional language that should, says shall meet all the applicable fire code requirements. In case there is a situation where there's a common driveway where it does render to be larger, you've got both in there as a safeguard.
Yeah.
I have no more questions.
Okay, we're sure Larson.
All right.
All right.
So do we need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Commissioner Larson?
Second.
Bootch was second, all his favor.
Hi.
You impose. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.